Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, May 13, 2024. I now call the meeting to order, and if we'd all stand, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance together, please. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everyone. Anna, a voice roll call, please.
Chair Erith.
Present.
Vice Chair Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas is absent. Commissioner Zick?
Here.
Commissioner Andrade?
Here.
Commissioner Klepak?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
All right, thank you, Anna. This brings us to announcements and presentations, and to start off the evening, we will do the oath of office for the newly appointed Planning Commissioner, David Martinez, and we'll have our city clerk give the oath of office.
Do you, David Martinez, Planning Commissioner of the City of Costa Mesa, solemnly affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear due faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter.
I do.
Congratulations and welcome to the plan.
Thank you, Ms. Green, and welcome, Commissioner Martinez. This brings us to public comments for matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to have your comments heard at this time, again, for items that are not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come to either podium. You all have three minutes to speak, and at the one-minute mark, you'll hear a little chime, and then at the three-minute mark, cut you off. So Ms. McDonald, we'll start with you. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Just a quick question, because I got this amended agenda this morning, and going through six different staff reports, it's really hard to tell what got changed. So in the interest of transparency, could we please have that pointed out to us and also maybe get a red line of, you know, the changes? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. McDonald. We'll make a point of asking about that in a minute. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? All right, Anna, do we have anyone on telephone or Zoom?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. I'll now close public comments, and we'll move on to Planning Commissioner comments and suggestions, starting with Commissioner Zick.
The only comment I've got tonight is I had the pleasure of meeting David for the first time before tonight's meeting. Now, of course, I'll refer to him as Commissioner Martinez. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade?
None at this point, but just to say, congratulations, David, on your graduation and joining the commission. We're excited to have you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Klepak?
Yes, fresh off a graduation from USC and jumping right in. Welcome, we're very excited to have you. I've seen you out and about in the hood, and I couldn't be more thrilled that you're on the commission, so congratulations and welcome.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Klepak. Vice Chair.
Also welcome, David Martinez, the Planning Commissioner. I'm glad you made it, fellow advocate for Safer Streets, who's been involved in the city for a long time, since he was a teenager. Also, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. And next week, on Saturday, is Love Costa Mesa Day. It's a big holiday in the city. LoveCostaMesa.org, go up there and sign up for a project. Also, it's Bike Month. May is Bike Month. I've said it a few times, you've heard me, but I think bicycling, making bicycling safe and comfortable for people of all ages and abilities in the city is one of the most important things that we could be doing as a city, especially as we grow. So Happy Bike Month, go join a ride, and be safe out there.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Before I hand it off to Commissioner Martinez, I will note that I was absent in our last meeting due to an illness, so I wasn't able to say goodbye to Jimmy Vivar, who was David's predecessor. So I did want to share just a couple brief thoughts about his time here and the impression that he left on us. So to start, I think I admired Jimmy for a variety of reasons. I always saw him as an independent thinker, a very deep thinker, who didn't let the politics or tangential policies get in the way of the work that we are charged to do up here. He always seemed to ask really good questions and gave very good answers to things, particularly from his point of view as a transportation engineer. Also seeing that he was a long-term Costa Mesa resident, came up through Newport Mesa Unified and went on to college and became rather successful. His story is really an admirable one for a variety of reasons. And over the course of the years that Jimmy and I were able to serve together, he sat right next to me where Commissioner Klepak is now. We got to become friends through time, and he's just a wonderful person who has a deep appreciation for Costa Mesa, and he will be missed. But like anything else, things move along, and I'm very happy to welcome Commissioner Martinez to our commission, and I'll leave it with him to round us out, let us know about you, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess first I should introduce myself to the public. My name is David Martinez. I am a 21-year resident of Costa Mesa, which is how old I am. I just graduated from USC with a bachelor's degree in public policy three days ago, and well, now I'm here. And as for local government experience, I previously served for two and a half years on the Active Transportation Committee and served for, I guess, a bit under six months with the chairman on the Newport Mesa Unified School District Banning Ranch Surplus Property Committee. So I have a bit of local government experience under my belt, and I just want to thank everyone for their warm welcome to this commission, and I'm excited to get to work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Martinez. This brings us to our consent calendar. I see we got one consent calendar item tonight. I'll note that all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission staff or the public request specific items, in this case, this one item, to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Items removed from the consent calendar will be discussed and voted upon immediately following Planning Commission action on the remainder of the consent calendar, and if you would, Anna, please read the title.
Consent Calendar Item Number One: Minutes. March 25, 2024 and April 8, 2024, unofficial meeting minutes.
All right, thank you, Anna. Colleagues, do you have any comments or thoughts on the meeting minutes? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion? Motion made by Vice Chair Toller. What is your motion, Vice Chair?
I move to approve the minutes.
All right, I'll go ahead and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, neither to me. So if we can call a question, please.
That motion carries 6-0.
All right, thank you, Anna. This brings us to our public hearing. I see we have three public hearing items tonight, but if you would allow me, colleagues, I'd like to reorder the list this evening and bring the Lighthouse Church up for our first, since we do have several members of the public. So I'll go ahead and make a motion for that. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right, any further thoughts? Right, Anna, do we need to take a vote on that?
Just give me one moment, I can do that, yes.
Okay. Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion. Motion made by Erith, seconded by Zick. If you'd please vote.
That motion carries 6-0.
All right, thank you, Anna. Let's see, I'll have to turn a few pages here. Anna, if you would, please read the title for Public Hearing Item Number Three that we are reading as the first item tonight through the reorder, please.
Public Hearing Agenda Item Number Three: Planning Application 21-02 for a Conditional Use Permit to Allow a Transitional Housing and Support Services Use with Up to 16 Individuals at Lighthouse Church, 1885 Anaheim Avenue. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
All right, thank you, Anna. I'll start to my left, Commissioner Martinez. Any ex parte to report?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Klepak?
Yeah, I met with the applicant on Saturday. I went to the facility and got a tour, and we discussed the history in the community, the work that they're doing, the network in the community. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Zick?
I met on site with Pastor Phil and his entire team for a couple hours and had a wide range of, and very fruitful, a discussion.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Andrade?
None, none to report.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair.
I also met on site with the applicant last Tuesday, and they gave me a tour and answered some questions.
All right, thank you, sir. I will also note that I talked to Pastor Phil for approximately 10 minutes to talk generally about the application. We also talked about the fact that we're in a similar line of work, him being in the church, me being in the nonprofit sector, and there was quite a bit of overlap with that here in Costa Mesa. And then on top of that, I did say hello at the beginning of this meeting. So with that said, I don't think there's anything else to mention. I'll go ahead and turn it over to our Associate Planner, Chris Yeager, to present the item. Chris?
All right. Good evening, Chair Erith and Commission. My name is Chris Yeager, Associate Planner here with the City of Costa Mesa. Tonight, I'll be presenting the application before you for the Conditional Use Permit for the Lighthouse Church to operate a transitional housing and supportive use, or supportive services use for a maximum of 16 people. This is specific in the city's land use matrix in the municipal code, and therefore, it does require a Conditional Use Permit to operate. There's no new construction or alterations proposed to the facility. This is a use permit only. So the project is located on the northwest corner of Anaheim Avenue and Plumer Street and has a general plan land use designation of high-density residential. It's zoned institutional and recreational. Project site is approximately 40,000 square feet, and it's improved with a 10,000-square-foot two-story church facility with 63 surface parking spaces. Properties to the north are zoned local business. They include a variety of commercial uses, including retail, food and beverage establishments, a veterinary office, and automobile service station. Properties to the east, west, and south are zoned multifamily residential, high-density, and also multifamily residential. These properties are developed with a variety of rental and ownership housing units and include a variety of unit types, including apartment complex, single-family dwellings, and other multifamily dwellings. The property is also within close proximity of other uses, including the Historical Society, the Normal Herzog Community Center, Lyons Park, the Public Library, and the City Senior Center. It's also within walking distance for a variety of retail and commercial uses in the neighborhood. The project site is also well-served by transit, including the 35 bus line, the 43 bus line, the 55 bus line, and the 71 bus line, all within a half-mile of walking. So background, the Lightning, or the Lighthouse Church has been providing this permanent supportive housing and shelter-related uses since 2004. This use, it was discovered under a normal inspection at the facility by the fire department, and that did result in code enforcement by the city, and that included bringing the city into conformance with building and fire codes and also obtaining the CUP. However, in May 2018, due to an urgent need to continue this type of community service, the Development Services Department and Lighthouse Church entered into an agreement to temporarily suspend all code enforcement actions so the church could prepare their CUP application. This also allowed for the church to host the Temporary Bridge Shelter, which was in response to litigation against the county and other cities. So in March of 2021, the church submitted their Conditional Use Permit application, and staff has been working with the church management to finalize the application since then. From 2019 to 2022, as I just mentioned, the church site did host the Temporary Bridge Shelter, which was a 50-bed shelter in modular buildings located in the parking lot. And after the city's permanent shelter opened in the spring of 2021, the shelter was removed from the Lighthouse parking lot. So the existing site, it includes the 10,000-square-foot church. There's landscaping on the front and side. The rest of the property is primarily parking lot. And the floor plan, as I mentioned, there's no proposed changes, but I have highlighted a variety of different spaces in the floor plan here. The second-floor dorm area, it is highlighted in red on the second floor. There's also a blue bathroom up there. There's two other blue bathrooms available on the first floor. The kitchen is in green, and the clothing closet is in yellow. The rest of the space is for various offices, storage, and the worship and fellowship hall. So you can see some of the existing conditions here. Starting on the top left, going right, is the worship hall. The middle picture on the top is an office that's being used as a computer lab for residents. The right picture is just a standard bathroom. The bottom left is one of the dorms. Bottom center is the kitchen area, and bottom right is the fellowship hall. So the transitional housing use, it is proposed to include a maximum of 16 people, and this is proposed to be a nine-to-12-month faith-based program. All the residents, they would reside in the existing second-story dorms, and the goal of the program is to get these residents back on their feet, and upon graduation, they would have all of their documentations, including birth certificate, ID, insurance, primary care providers, bank account, and employment, all where possible. This program is referral-based, so walk-up residents would have to go through the process to be referred and interviewed into the program before entering. Residents, they are required to follow program rules, and there is a three-strike policy, which was outlined in the applicant's documentation. In addition to the transitional housing use, a variety of supportive services are proposed. The facility currently operates as the Chrysalis Roads Deployment Location, and Chrysalis, it's a transitional jobs program for people who may be facing barriers to getting a job. This specific program, it partners with Caltrans, so they're picked up first thing in the morning at 6:30, taken off to work sites around Southern California, and then brought back at the end of the day. The applicants have indicated that this program has resulted in some of their residents obtaining full-time employment with Caltrans. In addition, they also include a mobile food pantry, which delivers 4,000 pounds of food per week to needy residents and families in Costa Mesa. They also provide on-call graffiti cleanup, and then on Fridays, they have nursing visits from Biola University to provide medical services, including minor medical checkups, blood pressure checks, and wound care. And they also have a clothing closet, which is also available on Friday to those in need of clothing or other similar items. And then, last but not least, they do host an annual vision clinic as well. So the project, it does have a variety of standard conditions, as well as some of these conditions on the screen. Firstly, an inspection would be required within two months of approval to verify all conditions and that the building is in compliance with all building safety requirements. All vehicles brought to the site by residents need to be registered and in working order. Any graffiti or litter on the site needs to be cleaned up immediately. No exterior storage is allowed, with the exception of bikes being stored in bike racks. And then, no signage is permitted for the use as well. All residents are subject to the 10:00 PM curfew on weekdays and 11:00 PM curfew on Friday and Saturday, and this can be modified for those who work late nights. Residents are to remain drug alcohol-free with random drug tests, and there's also a preliminary drug test as they enter the program. No outdoor camping or sleeping in cars is allowed, and then any participants who leave or are removed from the program are to be provided transportation, whether that's to a rehab program, family residence, or other housing option. And no walk-up residents are allowed. In order to approve a Conditional Use Permit, there are three specific findings that need to be made. Basically, the proposed development, it is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood because it is a residential use in a residential neighborhood with supportive services. Granting the Conditional Use Permit, it would not be material detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare because of the conditions placed on the property, and granting the CUP would not allow a use or density or intensity which is not allowed in accordance with the general plan designation. So with that, staff is proposing that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution that finds the project categorically exempt from CEQA and to approve the planning application subject to the conditions of approval. With that, I can make myself available to questions, and the applicant team is here as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yeager. I appreciate the presentation. Colleagues, any questions of staff on this? All right, let me see here. I do have one question, Mr. Yeager. Please bear with me. So I wanted to draw attention to condition of approval, proposed condition of approval number 18, which requires that if any program participant, this is on page 13, by the way, if any program participant is removed or voluntarily leaves the program, that the church provide transportation free of charge from the project site to a rehabilitation program, family residence, or other housing program that has capacity to accept the individual. I know that's how you ended the presentation, but I was curious to know if there is anything particular per that condition that you'd like to add? And I'm certainly happy to ask the applicant the same question, too.
I'm sorry, I was shuffling through my papers. What condition was that?
It's condition of approval number 16. If you're looking on the agenda report, it's on page 13 at the bottom, talking about free-of-charge transportation to further rehabilitation, family residence, if being removed from the program. And I think if anything, it was to draw the public's attention to the fact that it appears as if people are not being turned out to the streets. There's actually a safety net there that people, if they don't conform to the program in one way or another, that there is another place for them to go.
Correct. The intent of that condition, it is just that. If the program's not a right fit, the last thing we want is for these residents to be dumped onto the street. So this condition is meant to provide the transportation to other viable housing options.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Yeager. Colleagues, any, yeah, Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you. I just had a couple of quick questions. Where did the 16-bed limit come from, just so we can all understand that?
Yeah, so the building code has specific requirements for different occupancies. As it is currently constructed, it falls under the R3 occupancy, and it was brought up to meet that occupancy standard back in the code enforcement issues. Basically, what it comes down to is the fire and building code allow for a maximum of 16 residents with this occupancy.
All right, thank you. Could SB4 have applied to this project?
So SB4 is related to the development of housing on church properties. This project, it doesn't necessarily meet all of the requirements for SB4. Some of them include, here we go, thank you, that units be deed-restricted, that specific environmental reviews be conducted, and also that specific employers do the construction. So this project doesn't necessarily fall into the SB4 category.
Okay. And then you mentioned during the presentation that bike parking would be allowed outdoors, and I just wanted to make sure that for the conditions of approval, where it says, where would it be, vehicles need to be registered, that that would be interpreted as motor vehicles, and where it says personal storage will not be outside, that will not be enforced against bicycles and bike racks?
That is correct. The property does have built-in bike racks at the front of the property. The city would not enforce bikes parked in bike racks, as long as they're locked up and placed in the proper location. That would be fine. And yes, the intent is that motor vehicles are registered with the state.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Colleagues, do you have any further questions, or we can always revisit it later? We'll go ahead and move along. I will now open the public hearing and ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to come forward, and if you would, please do a few things for me. If you would, state your name for the record, let us know if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and if you agree to them. Yes, Pastor Phil?
Yeah, my name is Phil Iskins. I'm the lead pastor at the Lighthouse Church of the Nazarene Costa Mesa. I've been there, will have been there 15 years in October. And yes, we agree to all of the recommendations that have been presented here tonight, and I did want to kind of clarify one item. As far as bike racks, we have an enclosed parking lot, and the bike racks are inside the parking lot, so they wouldn't be stored outside. They wouldn't be visible to the public, and so that I wanted to make clear. On a side note, you talked about Jimmy Vivar, and I can remember a year or so ago when the city council was looking at the issue of dispensaries, and he actually reached out to me as a pastor and said he would encourage me to come and perhaps give a pastor's perspective, and I did. So I recognize his energy and his outgoing spirit with this city, and I've always appreciated that. So I don't know the protocol here, except that we just want to continue to do what we've been doing and have the city's a blessing along with it. And I think that's maybe a corny way of saying it, but that's the way. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
All right, thank you, Pastor Phil. And I don't know if there's any type of presentation you'd like to make, or if you'd like to kick it back to us for questions of you, if we have any. It's up to you.
Well, you know, I think that what you said about the, if somebody has exited from the program, that we would provide transportation, and I'm sitting there going, you know, we do that. Our outreach director, Linda Miles, is very adamant about providing another opportunity if it doesn't work out at the Lighthouse. She has resources that provide detox. She has, that would, just a myriad of opportunities for these people now. And unfortunately, there are times when there's no option, but it's very rare, very rare with us, and I think you could assume that that goes on at the city shelter as well. But boy, I'll tell you what, there's nobody more reliable to find opportunities for folks that don't necessarily fit our model. But I think there are people that would agree with that if they were able to stand here and say that tonight, so. I would like to bring up Linda Miles if I could. She doesn't like to do that. I don't know the protocol here. I'm just kind of freelancing here, but we have our resident director, Pastor Ronnie Steen, who's been working with the Lighthouse for how many, 10 years now? His job is to keep the residents accountable, that they maintain their chores, they keep their rooms neat. He has them, they send him pictures every morning that the beds are made and nice and neat, and I think the three guests who came and visited us can affirm to that, that the place was pretty tidy, and that's Ronnie's. And that's Ronnie's responsibility, to keep the lessons going, accountability. Linda Miles is the outreach director who, the halo. I'm the lead pastor of the church. We have a church, and I'm, I'm responsible for the integrity of the whole piece of property. So I represent the Church of the Nazarene. So we have been very successful over the years, and very unique, what we do at our particular church. And I believe that's the calling of the church, too, to not only have a service, but also to be community-minded and to help the helpless. It's our, it's our motto, right, is to rescue, restore, re-educate, and release. That's our mission statement. So I think we're doing a pretty good job. Amen. So I don't know what else I can say. Linda doesn't want to get up here. Well, have our, we could have our gatekeepers stand up, our current gatekeepers. If they would stand up. Is Art here? Art's here. Art is a gentleman that was living in his car. Art, come up here. I want you to come up. Is that okay to do this? Can I get Art up here?
You know, it's your time, Pastor Phil.
Art, come on up here. Art was a gentleman that was living in his car for four years. Someone from the city reached out to us and wanted to know if we could help Art. And we made a decision to bring Art in. He ended up working with Chrysalis, the nonprofit, and just recently was hired full-time for Caltrans. That's quite a success story. Four years in a car, comes into the lighthouse, and is there something you want to say, Art? Are you scared, or what?
No, I'm not scared. I just.
We're, we're okay. We're, you know, we're okay up here.
I understand that. Yes, just as he said, I was living in my automobile for, well, closer to five years. And a person from the city, Mr. Beegan, he helped me. I didn't even realize I'd ever heard of the Lighthouse Church before. And he says, I have a place for you to go. And that's how I became living at the Lighthouse Church. And that's the first time I slept in a bed. I remember that night, I met Pastor, Pastor Ronnie, who wanted to find out who exactly I was and all. And everything worked out to where I'd be able to stay there. And I've been there now approximately, going on two years, I believe. I don't know exactly. And within that time, I've, I've learned a lot, as far as the spiritual part of it, too, because it is a church where we're living, it is a men's ministry. And never been involved with anything like that, but I think it's a beautiful thing. But as far as the, the home itself, it's fantastic. It's, it's got me back on, on my feet. I'm still there. But as Pastor Phil just mentioned, that I, I started with the Chrysalis program that you had up on the board here. And stayed with Chrysalis, and it helped me to get into actually working with Caltrans, who were Chrysalis has contracted with. And so, I would like to think that I would, I've been a success because of the lighthouse and the program that they have. Yes.
Great.
Do you have any questions for me?
Art, thank you, thank you for, for sharing your story.
Yes.
It's a really nice story. Thanks.
Yes, all right.
Right.
I could bring up every gatekeeper if I wanted to, but.
Well, how about this, Pastor Phil? How about we kick it around up here a little bit?
All right.
For some questions, if you don't mind?
Sure. And then, one more, if I could just say one more.
Absolutely.
Herman Dynenberg, why don't you stand up?
Yeah, Herman.
Herman is, came to the lighthouse several years ago. He was homeless. He was frustrated. I think he was, I say he was angry. He doesn't agree with that, but I, I think he was angry. And I talked to Pastor Ronnie, and I said, Ronnie, you need to talk to this guy. And I called up Ronnie and Herman, Ronnie said, he's in. Well, since he's been there, he is now, has his own apartment. He has his own apartment. He's our office manager. He's one of the in-house managers of our facility. And he's instrumental with it. We also have some members of our church, Dave Schaefer. I guess I could talk, I could talk, man. But I'm going to sit down and let you, what? Oh, plus, plus he's being on a journey to be ordained as an elder in the Church of the Nazarene. So that's a lot of success for this young man right here.
Thank you, Pastor Phil. And Herman, thank you for allowing us to hear your story. We appreciate it.
Want me to step up here?
Yes, please. Colleagues, I'll go ahead and kick us off with just a couple of quick questions before I move it along. If you would, Pastor Phil, would you mind explaining the referral program a little bit more? I, I know that you provided a pretty substantive package for us to read, but just for the public who may not have read it, what does the referral program look like? How is, how does one enter the program, and, and so forth? That would be helpful.
I'm glad you brought that up, because that's kind of a, a little bit of a, an area that, yeah, for the most part, it's referral. It's referral, word of mouth, someone, we hear about someone. Linda Miles talks to somebody, Ronnie does, I do. There's a three-person voting team here that, that comes to the place where we allow somebody to come in. And I would have to say that it is, it's word of mouth, it's referral. We invite him to come to talk to Linda. And occasionally, and very rarely, I would have to say, when you think about it, does anybody walk up and walk into the office and say, hey, I want to come into the lighthouse? Very rare. It's always usually people making referrals and saying, why don't you take a look at this person? So I think that's pretty accurate.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Linda can chime in anytime she wants to, so.
I don't know if she's coming up at this point. Next question, Pastor Phil, if you don't mind. Maybe you could let us know just briefly how the program is funded, and how you found support for what you're, what you're doing through this?
Okay, so there are two 501(c)(3)'s on our property. There's the Outreach Ministries, Lighthouse Outreach Ministry headed by Linda Miles. And then, there's, every church has a 501(c)(3). I'm the lead pastor of the church side. I oversee the entire integrity of the building. Linda Miles is the one who secures funding through foundations, through grants. I'm not really involved in that end, except that she's very successful. And we, she has a husband who has a group of men. And through that little Bible study, she was able to get enough resources to totally renovate our upstairs. We have all-new floors, paint, cabinets, dressers, brand-new stuff, top-quality. So she's very aggressive in looking for resources. And that's kind of how we do it. Been successful for going on 15 years now.
That's good.
So.
Well, Linda, I know you're not coming up here, but I, I know what you're going through. Are you coming up? All right.
Oh, wow.
I was, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm on the grant side, too, so I know what you're going through.
I know, and I, I was thinking, your pastor Phil's doing such a wonderful job.
I'm going like this now.
I didn't think I was going to say. So, I'm so sorry, I have a sore leg for my horse.
No problem.
Well, first of all, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you so much, everyone that came in to visit. I am passionate. I've been at the lighthouse 20 years. I am passionate about restoring people's lives. It doesn't have to end with addiction. It doesn't have to end with mental illness. And so, through the years, we have come to this spot where it's now this wonderful, wonderful communication with our other city agencies. And I'm so proud to be a part of that. I mean, we work very closely with the outreach team and other, you know, parole, probation, other treatments in the area. You know, like, over the last 20 years, I, I pretty much know everybody in the area. So it just works. When you ask about referrals, it usually comes from there, someone from Costa Mesa. It's, it's very important to me that we support Costa Mesa, so our guys are from Costa Mesa. I like them to bring families, and it's a lot of, sometimes it's even my friends' families, where their sons or daughters have, you know, graduated from high school and Costa Mesa High School, and fallen out from addiction. So it's those kind of little phone calls. With the funding, several of our grants are multi-year, too, which really helps. You know that. It really helps. And then, others come from, like, Bible studies, or speaking at Rotary Club, or writing foundation grants that come in every year. So that's how that's done.
Gotcha. Thank you very much, Ms. Miles. I'll go, I don't have any more questions at the moment, so I'll kick it over to my colleagues. Do you have any questions of the applicants? Yes, Commissioner, go for it.
Thank you. So over your time in operation, about how many people have you served?
Oh, my Lord.
Over 15 years?
Over the last 20 years. Gosh, it would be in the thousands. It would be in the thousands. We have a success rate that's about twice the national average. And I only attest that to, it's faith-based. We hold on. We don't let go. And the guys can, you know, admit to that. We hold on. When, when someone falls out, like you had the question that was, falls out, it's very important to me that we deal with the human. It's not the addiction, it's not the mental illness, it's the human. And it's the family that's around that human. So maybe they go stay with their grandmas for a while, or they go to treatment for 90 days. Or maybe they need a detox for 10 days, and then they come back to us. And that transportation is provided, we keep in touch with, I have one of the, a boy that's been on our street for 20 years, and he's, he's not a boy, I call him a boy, he's an older man. But he, I mean, he's in treatment right now, and we'll pick him up and bring him back to us when he's done with treatment. So it's just, that's kind of investment that, that we can do because we're faith-based, I believe.
You know, I, I want to interject something here, too.
Go ahead.
Because one thing I don't think Chris brought up was the Reconnection Program that is supported not only by the city, but also our outreach. And that's a program where if somebody comes to the lighthouse, and I had a gentleman come here about a week and a half ago from Kentucky or something, he walks in, and he tells me he's just been in Costa Mesa two days from Kentucky. And I said, well, what are you doing in Costa Mesa? And he says, well, I'm looking for a relative. And I said, man, I said, you need to go home. And I said, Costa Mesa's not the place for you. I, I said, it's, it's difficult, it's expensive. And Linda jumped on this gentleman, and he's back in Kentucky today. And, and part of that is that we don't just send them there and let them get off the plane. There has to be a party willing to take them in. So this gentleman, I believe, not spent the night, one night in the lighthouse, next day he was on a bus back to Kentucky. That's what we do as well, in conjunction with the city. Am I correct?
Yeah, there's, you know, John Beeg of the team, the outreach team, we all do this. But I've actually had 13 Reconnections since January. And those are people that maybe have been in a treatment in our city, and they have no funding to get home. And they get stuck. It's so unfortunate. Sometimes 20 and 21-years-old, young girls and guys on our street because there's no money, because they've been curbed by a treatment, or they've been, you know, got here and thought they were going to go to treatment, and it didn't work out, and they get stuck. So it's a whole process that we have. And, and they're all run through PD. We don't send anybody back with warrants. We don't, you know, there's a little process that, it's just not like a bus ticket and away you go. So there's a process that we do, and we have, work with our Costa Mesa PD to make sure that they can go home beforehand. But it's all funded by the outreach, too. It's, you know, the people that I send are funded by the grants and stuff that I write for the outreach.
All right.
I want to thank Linda for coming up here and support.
Yeah. I don't like it.
She doesn't like to do that.
No, but thank you so much. And, you know, I did want to say, though, you know, the city of Costa Mesa is like the city of the arts. That's the call sign of the city. But it's, it's the art of collaboration. It's the art of, of loving those that have fallen down. It's, it's this art of, of wonderful communication between agencies. It's all that art, too, that is just, I'm so passionate about, and it's, you guys need to be so proud. So many things are happening here that aren't happening in other cities.
That's correct.
Or that we're way far ahead of other cities. I'm so proud. I'm so proud of everything that's going on here. It's amazing. Thank you.
All right. So you mentioned being a faith-based program. And I wanted to ask if the participants have to attend a faith program at your site, or if they can go to a different religious institution as part of this program?
Do you want to try?
Sure, why don't you jump on that? But, yeah, we're faith-based. All the residents required to attend all services. We have two services on Sunday at 9:00 in the morning, at 4:00 in the afternoon. We have a Wednesday midweek service. The residents are all required to attend that. We also have a Friday one-hour prayer time. The residents are required to attend that. We have Monday through Friday devotions from 8:00 to 10:00. We, we open the doors of our church and allow the community to come in. We currently only have seven residents at this particular moment in time. But sometimes we get up to 25 people that'll walk in on a weekday to participate in our devotion. But the residents who are not working, and, and they're all required to be there. So it's stringent. Then Pastor Ronnie Steen has lessons that he requires them to complete and turn into him. So it's faith-based. And if I, 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 I have to say that when I, I got here 15 years ago, it was unique. We had men living in the building. When I was appointed pastor, I went home and I'm laying on my bed, I go, what is going on? What did I get myself into? You know? But I'll tell you something, I, I decided, make a decision. Are we going to be a church? Are we going to be a mission? Or can we be both? And I think we're being very successful at doing both, and presenting a model, I think, for other cities personally, and other churches. And the unique relationship that we've established with the city of Costa Mesa needs to be regarded and mentioned as well. It's very, it's very positive. And I appreciate that, so.
Commissioner Martinez, I know you're, I think you were saying, are there other religions that are invited? And yes, they can attend other churches. We have some requirements to be in our program because we fund it, and there's some requirements. However, there's, you know, we have Jewish people that were raised in a Jewish family in our program. I mean, we've had Muslim people in our program. It, it doesn't mean that they can't choose a faith after they leave us, but there is some requirements day-to-day that they be with us. But yes, they can attend other churches, or go with their family, or, you know, if they have another faith that they want to bring to us even, too. So there's a gentleman in the Costa Mesa Bridge Shelter, and I ordered him an Arabic Bible. So it, it doesn't matter. We help every, we help everybody.
All right.
Everybody that comes to.
And that daily devotion, too, by the way, is not just taught by, by the pastors at the lighthouse. We have people in the community, like Dave Schaefer, who teaches Friday, has a Bible study on Tuesday night. That gets about how many folks, Dave?
Yeah, all you guys are welcome tomorrow night. It's awesome.
Yeah. So anyway, I'm sure you're going to give an opportunity for some public comments, and so I, I don't want to, I, I'm just excited to be here, and I appreciate your, your time with us. And, and I believe the positive energy.
Let's go. Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry, I, I'll, I have just two more questions.
Yeah.
Okay. So just to confirm for the public, is the program in groups of, like, 16, and then you bring in another 16? Or can people just come in throughout?
Yeah, it's, it's, you could imagine, you know, we have some boys that have come in, some men that have come in in January. Well, they're on a process, and we keep them with them. They work on the premises for 45 days with us. They do the pantry that you saw, they work around the lighthouse. It's very important that they take some time to just restart with us. But, you know, one can come in in January, one comes in in March, somebody comes out of jail in June, you know, they're all on this revolving. But that actually makes it to our advantage because we can be more personal with them, too. You need to spend more time personally. So they're not all this, like, group that comes in and they all get sent away. That doesn't happen like that.
And David, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. I have a question for you, too, by the way. Because we want to have 16 beds, doesn't mean tomorrow we're going to have 16 people in the lighthouse. We've been coded for 16, and we just want the opportunity and the flexibility to be able to, to help and still do it within the parameters of, of what the city allows. And so, it's part of being a good neighbor. So our plan is not to just bring 16 people in. It's going to be a, as we determine. And you mentioned P4. Is that what you said?
SB4.
Huh?
Senate Bill 4.
Is that, is that something to do with building housing on church property? Yes.
Yes.
That's not something that could ever happen because the property is owned by the Church of the Nazarene. So, yeah, I just, I just wanted to clear that up for myself. So, yeah.
All right. And then my, my last question is if you would ever consider, like, in the future, having individuals who aren't men in the program, because the conditions of approval, like specifically say, men. So, so if you were ever to consider in the future not having men, I don't know if that would be allowed. So I just wanted to see if-
It's a difficult process to do coed. It needs a much larger staff. It needs 24-hour men, male and female staff. There's a lot of different rules. I mean, years ago, I probably would have tried. I would have thought that I could have done it. But it's, it's, it's very difficult. And I don't think it's advised, you know? To be clean and sober, it really should be a year before you have any other relationships. You know, you meet guys, or you go on dates or something like that, and it's very hard to stop that. So it just is to their advantage to run an all, you know, one male or female program.
It'd be nice if there was another opportunity for, for ladies in a similar situation. But just like Linda said, it's very difficult to manage coed, especially in a small, the smallness of what we do.
All right. Thank you. Those are my questions.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Anyone else? Commissioner Andrade?
So, understanding that, folks, you're, you're looking to grow to serve up to 16, but it kind of comes in waves, and not all at once. Well, do you foresee any need of increased staff support, you know, should your, your count go higher at any given time to kind of make sure that everybody has the, is able to maintain the curriculum and all the requirements?
I'm there six days a week. I mean, just because I love it and I'm passionate about it. But we do have an onsite staff. We have daytime and nighttime. And that will revolve, it's, it's, it's almost like cross-training in a business. So they're cross-trained, like, to, as they grow through the, through the program, someone will be cross-trained to be their nighttime staff, or somebody will be cross-trained to be their daytime. We always have a staff member at, on the premises all the time. So as we grow, there really isn't that much difference between where we are right now and to go to 16, because those men will be, like, right now, we have four men working full-time. And that's the goal. That's, I mean, that's our goal. Bank accounts, vehicles, working full-time, savings accounts, that kind of thing. They'll be graduating, and that will give us room to move more in. So it's always kind of this revolving thing. So, no, I don't, I don't think that's a problem. And going to 16 really doesn't feel like a huge leap for us. We've, we've done it before. We've had it before. And, no, as far as staff sizing, you know, we have the three of us senior staff, and then we have the guys that move up through the program that are staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Vice Chair, Commissioner Zick, Commissioner Klepek. Good, good, good. All right. Well, thank you, you two. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. We might ask you to come up a little bit later on, but thank you for your time. I will now open for the hearing for public comments. If you'd like to speak to this item, please approach either podium. You'll have three minutes to speak, and at the one-minute mark, you'll hear a little chime, and then it'll cut off right at the three-minute mark. So if anyone in chambers wishes to speak, please feel free to come to either side of the dais here. I'll start with you, sir. Welcome. Yes?
Hi, my name is Ambrose Daniel Coranza. I was in the Lighthouse program. Did really good for me. I was homeless for nine years. I was stuck on drugs. I was in Santa Ana at my mom's house, and she told me, why don't you go to the Lighthouse? You know, they heard they have a program there. So I went to, I went to the Bible studies and the church services, and eventually I asked the pastor, I started talking to the pastors, and they invited me in. And since I've been there, they've helped me out with, I have, I have mental illness, so they connected me with Telecare Corporation, which helped me with my behavioral health services. And I got my, I'm back and talking to my son. I got my, I've got my family back. I've been doing really good. And I have my own apartment now. And my apartment's in Santa Ana, and I volunteer at the church every day. Every day of the week is what I do now. And I just want to say that. I did, I did really good. It helped me connect with my family. And I'm just really happy now. I'm actually a really different person. That's all.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir?
My name is Louis Ray Kraus III. I'm, I'm 43, and I've struggled with homelessness for the last 10 years. I used to live in an alley in, in Costa Mesa behind Wallace in my car. And I'm not really sure how I found Linda Miles. But she told me one day, she said, honey, you hungry? You, you know, you look starving. You know, I want to help you. And I got to talking with her. She invited me to a concert at the Lighthouse Church the next night. That's where I met Pastor Ronnie Steen. They sat down and talked with me and told me I didn't have to be out there anymore. You know, asked me if I knew Jesus and I loved Him and wanted to change my life. The requirements were to put down the drugs, to stay clean and sober, to participate in services at the church, help feed the hungry and clothe the homeless. I spent a lot of time doing that. I spent a lot of time in prayer. I lost my family and my children during that, my homelessness. Through the program, I was able to, to reconnect with my, with my fiance. Pastor Phil has actually married us. We just celebrated our five-year anniversary this weekend, this past weekend on May 4. I have two new vehicles. I have a two-bedroom house. My kids are super healthy. And I owe it all to this program, you know? I, I got a job seven years ago when I walked through those doors. I still have that same job today. I now make twice what I earned when I started. And, and it's through the help of Pastor Phil and Pastor Ronnie, Pastor Herman, and especially Linda Miles. You know, I call her Mama Linda. For so many different reasons. My kids even call her Mama Linda. My mom calls her Mama Linda. She's the type of lady that'll, that'll stop at a bus stop and, and dust somebody off. You know what I mean? And send them on their way a lot happier. You know, she changes the, the atmosphere everywhere she goes. You know, a while back, I tattooed this right here on my hands. It says, my God, my wife, my kids are my life. Right here, it says, Mama Linda gave me my life back. That, that's what I got at the Lighthouse Church. I got my life back. All right.
Thank you for sharing your story. I appreciate it. Yes, sir?
Hi. How you doing, Commissioners? Mike Shuler. I'm 53 years old. August 4th of the last year, I was a mess. I've been on the streets of Costa Mesa since 2011. I didn't find Linda. Linda found me years ago. And she's always kept in touch throughout the years. She'd see me, and she'd stop and pull over and, you know, just check on me and stuff like that. So anyways, I, what happened was, is I, I just got so sick and tired of being on the streets. I decided to go to detox. And then November 14th of the last year, I went through Nancy Clark's for five months. And, and I would go to church at the Lighthouse on the weekends, because I couldn't go because I had programming through the week. So I would go church on Sundays with Pastor Phil and Pastor Ronnie's services. And every weekend, along with all my programming through Nancy Clark, I regained, I got, I was gainfully employed through Nancy Clark, being in a sales position. But then I got laid off because I wasn't producing, like, you know? So anyways, but it afforded me to pay the bills at Nancy Clark, because I was a private pay, which was good. Anyways, so now I'm coming, I'm just past my six-month sobriety, six months of sobriety. Linda asked what I was going to do, because they, you know, they, they checked, they checked in with me, and then what are you going to do when you leave Nancy's? And I said, well, I suppose I'm going to continue on what I'm doing. I'm going to go sober living somewhere. And she goes, well, why don't you come and talk to Pastor Ronnie and see, you know? And so I met with him. And now I'm at the Lighthouse, and it was the best thing I ever did. I, I get a chance to wake up every morning and set my intentions for the day, God-centered, and focus on going forward. It doesn't happen overnight. I need, I just, I want to make sure that I get my stuff together, you know what I mean? And it doesn't happen overnight. And so I'm willing to put in the time it takes.
Thank you for sharing your story. And congratulations on your sobriety. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak to this item? All right. Seeing none. Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom or telephone?
Wendy Lees, you may provide your public comment.
All right. Ms. Lees, welcome.
Yes, good evening. You know, I just enjoy listening to the stories. What it does for my heart as a Costa Mason, I go back to the 2000s and when we really had a homeless problem, especially in that area downtown, by Plummer and Pomona and Anaheim. And I met Pastor Phil then. And, and so, fast forward, I definitely support the staff's recommendation tonight to approve the application, subject to the conditions of approval. Because the program there is saving lives. It's changing lives, but it's saving lives. And every life is so important. I have three family members. One just passed away last week because of addiction, and two others in Tucson. And, you know, this program is saving the lives of Costa Masons. The depth of care that they give, the long-term care, and just the stories should persuade you that this is a model program. And I'm glad the last speaker mentioned Nancy Clark. Because with a Lighthouse, which is a Lighthouse for those who are in darkness, and Nancy Clark, they've been here a long time before we had the onslaught of the, the for-profit sober living homes. And the, the programs of Lighthouse and Nancy's are just so much better for our city, because they really do care about the individual. So I, I hope that, I know that, that they also collaborate with the city. And Linda does a wonderful job. People still call me and, and ask me for referrals. And I always say, just call Linda. She will help you. So anybody who's out there that's listening to you, that has a family member, or a neighbor, or a grandchild, or a son or daughter who has problems with addiction, don't call, don't hesitate to call Linda. She will help, and lives are changed. There was another, Chase, I think was his name, that Linda and I worked together, and she found him a program. And so they may not end up at the Lighthouse, but, but it is that collaboration. So I definitely support the staff's recommendation, and just thank you for Pastor Phil and Linda and for Ronnie that, that have been there for so long. And this, this COP has taken a long time. But it should get, it just should. I hope it's unanimous tonight. So thank you for letting me speak.
All right, Wendy, thank you so much. And I know you and I are friends, and that's the first time I've heard about your family members. So I'm very sorry to hear that. My condolences. Anyone else on Zoom, Anna?
No, there, no, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing and ask my colleagues, do you have any further questions for the applicant? All right. Seeing none. Pastor Phil and Ms. Miles, if you'd like to come up, do you have any closing comments? You don't have to if you don't want to, but we'll give you the
No, I just appreciate the opportunity to stand here and just pitch what we do in the community, and have been doing for the 15 years I've been here, and then the five or six years before I got here. And Linda Miles was on board for the over 20 years, and I've been here 15 years. So it's an amazing opportunity for us and the city, I believe, to partner in a way that the city and the church ought to partner. So that's really all I got to say in that regard. So you didn't need Linda to stand up here, huh?
Unless she wants to. Pastor Phil, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, do you have any further questions for staff? All right. Seeing none. I will now close the public hearing, and I will go ahead and make a motion to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA per SEQA Guidelines, Section 15301, existing facilities, and approved planning application 21-02 based on the findings of fact and subject to the conditions of approval. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Zick. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. I'll start off by saying that the Lighthouse Church has been a staple in this community. For as long as I've been in the nonprofit world, and I know my colleagues up here have heard this probably a couple times after the, for the last few years, but I really revere what you do. It's, it's really unique, and it's special. And it's, quantitatively, you can demonstrate that what you're doing is lifting people back up that are facing a really tough time. When we, when we hear stories like those from Herman and from Art and from others about getting back to a place where they want to be, and even beyond, it's really inspiring. So I know that, you know, that, that's not a fact in and of itself, as far as what we have to find to approve a conditional use permit for you. But it certainly humanizes the process of making those facts and findings, and understanding really the, the depth of importance that you bring to this community. And I'm enthusiastically, enthusiastically happy to approve your project. Commissioner Zick?
This is one of the easiest approvals, one of the most enthusiastic approvals that I've given to an application. I didn't have any questions, because I spent the entire morning with the entire team. And, and they can attest to the number of questions I already asked. Lighthouse clearly has a proven track record for what they're currently doing. And to scale that up to 16, to me, is, is just a no-brainer. My confidence in your ability to do what you do on a larger scale is without question. Linda's passion was unbelievable. I had very narrow, very specific questions that I had, kind of the way my mind thinks. She wanted to tell me about the thousands of success stories that she's been involved in. And I wouldn't let her do that. And I felt I was being mean by cutting her off. I know what her passion is. I just needed my questions answered. You know, at the end of the day, this is a land use decision. That's what we're all about up here. We're not passing judgment on, do you do good work? Do you do bad work? Are you faith-based? Are you non-faith-based? That may factor into our, our sentiment. But at the end of the day, this is a land use, a decision. A neighborhood church that caters and supports to the neighborhood, I can't think of a more spot-on land use than what a neighborhood church is all about. I think most churches have missions. Their mission may be supporting a missionary in Africa, or sending their youth to Central America annually, things like that. Your mission is right in our own backyard, and it's impressive to me. And as you had said, and I thought more about this, if everybody in this city who genuinely cares about the homeless problem took someone into their home, we wouldn't have a homeless problem. If every church in this city did what you're doing at your church for the homeless, we wouldn't have a homeless problem. I'm impressed with what you do. I enthusiastically support this application. I felt honored to meet you, Pastor Phil, Pastor Ronnie, Luke, Herman, the whole team that I met when I was out there, and of course, Linda. So congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade, any comments?
Yeah, hard to follow that, that speech. But all around, fully agree with the Commissioners up here. You guys are doing God's work, as they say, quite literally. So thank you so much for that, and really providing a home and support for, for the folks in our community. It's absolutely admirable what you're doing. And so I'm really excited to see how you can continue to grow. And, and then definitely take on the pastor's challenge for other churches out here in our community. Let's copy this model. This is clearly a best practice in our community. It's really such a great effort. So definitely, pastor challenge is on. Everyone that's listening, invite you all to do the same, and really utilize your resources in giving forward, giving forward to, to those who need it the most. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Commissioner Martinez, any thoughts?
I guess I just want to say thank you for making my first vote so easy. You, you put on a great program. I hadn't heard of your program before. But after tonight, it's evident that you do very great work. And the thousands of people that you've served over the years, and the hopefully thousands in the future, will benefit tremendously. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Klepek?
Yeah, just a heartfelt thank you for what you do in our community. When somebody is in that situation, it's so important that they get out of that environment, and that they not just have a bed for the night, but they build a tribe and a routine, and they, they learn to be of service. And that's how you grow confidence and just, you know, learn- how to live again. So just thank you, and I will also be enthusiastically supporting.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Klepek. Vice Chair Toller?
All right. I'm in support of the motion. I didn't have any questions, because I just wanted you guys to hurry up and get back to doing what you're doing so well. So, good job, everybody. And you have a great program, obviously.
All right. To all up here, thank you for your thoughts. Anna, let's call the question.
That motion carries 6-0.
All right. Thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck, Pastor Phil and all y'all. Thank you. So Anna, I think we, we'll hear one more item, and then we'll move on to take a quick break after this next one. So Anna, if you'd please read the title for public hearing item number one, the original one, please.
Agendaized Public Hearing Item Number One: Design Review PDES-24-0001 and Tentative Parcel Map 2023-187 for a two-unit residential small lot subdivision development at 1022 West Wilson Street. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
All right. Thank you very much, Anna. I'll start to my right. Commissioner Zick?
I don't have any ex parte communication, but just for the record, I believe that we did receive some public comment on this. I thought I had seen something.
Was that in the late bundle?
I thought there was a letter you'd sent us that talked about a concern about traffic.
I believe it might have been under the heading of a different item. It might have been misplaced. It might have been bundled in with comments under public hearing number one or something.
Commissioner Zick, there is a letter. It was an email that was submitted by a gentleman named Mel Kong.
Okay, on this item.
On this item.
That's all I was trying to bring up.
It started out, "I oppose the building of two McMansions at 1022 West Wilson," and went on from there. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right. Thank you. So Commissioner Zick, any ex parte? All right. Commissioner Andrade, vice chair?
No.
Commissioner Klepek?
No.
Commissioner Martinez?
I had a brief phone call with the applicant.
Okay, and I have no ex parte to report. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Ramondo to present the item. Mr. Ramondo?
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeffrey Ramondo, Assistant Planner with the Economic and Development Services Department. And the item before you tonight is a design review and tentative parcel map application for a small lot subdivision development at the subject property 1022 West Wilson Street. Now, the subject property is currently developed of a single-family dwelling and a detached garage, which will be proposed to be demolished. The project includes the request for approval of a design review and a tentative parcel map application to facilitate a residential small lot subdivision to create two parcels, and for the construction of a new detached residential unit on each parcel. In addition, the project proposes site improvements, including new hardscape and landscaping. The applicant also intends to propose a detached accessory dwelling unit in the rear of each newly created parcel, which are currently shown on the project plans for reference purposes only, but will be subject to a separate permit. However, please note that the focus of the item before you tonight is the review and approval for the small lot subdivision, and the design review for the new single-family dwellings. Now, the subject site is located in the west side of Costa Mesa, and the property consists of an approximately 10,817 square foot lot that is identified on the north side of West Wilson Street, between Pacific Avenue and Canyon Drive. The property is zoned R2MD, and has a general plan land use designation of medium-density residential. The surrounding established neighborhood contains a mixture of single-family and multifamily residential developments, and within the vicinity of the neighborhood, there is an existing church and a school in the area. Immediately adjacent to the west of the property is an existing two-story apartment complex, and to the east is an existing two-story single-family development. And here are a few site photos of the site. The photos you see here to the right were taken at different angles from the front of the property. The project will involve demolishing the existing dwelling and that detached garage to accommodate the new development. The proposed tentative parcel map proposes to subdivide the 10,817 square foot parcel that is outlined in red into two new separate parcels. Parcel 1, which is the parcel outlined and shaded to the left, will be the slightly larger parcel between the two, and will consist of 5,502 square feet. And Parcel 2, as seen to the right, will be 5,315 square feet in size. Both parcels will also have separate curb cutouts to accommodate driveway access directly from West Wilson Street. When it comes to parking for a small lot subdivision development, the required parking per code is based on the amount of bedrooms per unit. The proposed site plan includes a detached single-family dwelling on each parcel, and each unit will feature a two-car garage, which you can see in the shaded areas in blue, and two open parking spaces are met on the driveway, which are also highlighted in yellow. The project will be providing the minimum number of parking as required by code, with two garage spaces and two open parking spaces for each parcel. The small lot project also proposes to provide 45.8% of open space for the entire development lot, which complies with the minimum requirement of 35%. Each dwelling will consist of a total living area of 2,266 square feet, with one bedroom and one bathroom on the first floor, and three bedrooms and two bathrooms on the second floor. Each unit will also have an attached 580 square foot two-car garage. And currently, the floor plans shown on this slide reflect the unit located on Parcel 2. However, the floor plans for each unit are nearly identical, with the exception that Parcel 1 will have a smaller entry-covered porch area in comparison to Parcel 2, which we can see in the following slide. And here is a color rendering of the front of each unit. As mentioned, the entry-covered porch area for Parcel 1 on the left is a little more narrow than the entry porch for Parcel 2. Overall, the project proposes modern farmhouse features, which are compatible with the immediate surrounding neighborhood, as the neighborhood features a diverse collection of architectural styles, including other residences with modern, eclectic, and traditional influences. The proposed design meets the intent of the city's residential design guidelines, as each unit features a variety of projections, and has been designed with articulation and offsets with varying roof types and materials to avoid a boxy-like appearance. The building materials will include a mixture of stucco plaster and vertical siding for the exterior walls, and shingle and standing seam metal roofing. And each unit, as you can see on the rendering here, will also vary in color to give a low character, with the western unit intended to be primarily painted white, and the eastern unit to be painted a shade of gray. Now, the code requires that all landscape areas consist of drought-tolerant plant material, and shall meet the minimum number of plant types based on the total landscape square footage. Landscape area proposed for an entire development site consists of 1639 square feet. The proposed planting materials, such as trees, shrubs, and ground cover coverage, are proposed to exceed the code minimum. Staff has also included a condition that a final landscape plan will be reviewed with a building permit plan check, and will need to comply with the water efficiency landscape ordinance. In addition, staff has also included a condition to require that the driveways and parking areas to be finished with decorative-stamped concrete or previous pavers. In order to approve the project, the planning commission must make the required findings for tentative parcel map and design review applications. The proposed design review for the residential small lot subdivision complies with the findings, since the development standards comply with the zoning code, and the proposed design of the new two-story units comply with the residential design guidelines. The proposed tentative parcel map also complies with the findings since the subdivision, and the proposed use is consistent with the zoning code and general plan, and that there is adequate existing infrastructure to serve the two new units. With that said, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA, and to approve design review and tentative parcel map applications, subject to conditions of approval. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And the applicant, Grant Bixby, is also in attendance to answer any questions this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ramondo. I appreciate the presentation. Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ramondo, for your presentation. Got a couple of questions for you. Could we start on page three of your presentation?
Is it this one?
Yes, thank you. The vacant land that is due north of the site, looks like you've got parcel lines that show that that's part of that development along Canyon. Are you aware of any intended use for that vacant land at this time?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then the vacant land that is just to the west of that, it appears that is that part of that single-family development property? And do you know why that is vacant, and what the intended use might be there?
Sorry, repeat that one more time?
There appears to be vacant land just to the west and north of the site.
So Commissioner Zick, the land that's vacant to the west appears to be part of the property, where you can see the swimming pool in the image.
Correct.
But to our knowledge, there's nothing pending or submitted for that piece of land. So I don't know what the intended future use of that land may be.
Okay. And then if we could move to page 10 of your presentation. Thank you. So I was curious what the path of travel would be for an occupant of the ADU. And it appears from the site plan, or not the site plan, yeah, the site plan of the 11 by 17 drawings that we have, that the entrances to the ADU, both ADUs are on the east side. So am I to assume that a person comes in the front gate of the property, and then walks down the side of the house?
So I'll have Jeffrey pull up another exhibit. I think it's probably better shown on the landscape plan.
Okay.
But my understanding is that the applicant, or the resident of the ADUs in both properties, would walk from the sidewalk up the driveway, and then they would make a right-hand turn. Actually, if we can, yeah. And they would make a right-hand turn, and then follow along the right side of the house, down the side yard. Correct. And you can see as they get to the back of that side yard, there's another gate that opens to the ADU parcels.
Okay. And if we go back to page 10, I think that landscaping in the front looks real pretty, but that along the curb is where the ADU occupants would park their vehicles. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So then the other two questions I have, assuming this is approved, and plans are submitted, plan check is completed, permits are issued, does the ADU have to be completed in order for there to be a final on the permit?
Commissioner Zick, no.
No. So you could issue a CFO for the house while the ADU is still under construction?
That's correct.
What if, at the time the house construction is completed, and you've issued a CFO for that, this developer sells that property? Does the right to build the ADU transfer to that new owner?
So actually, the ADU right to build carries with the land, for the most part, just because it's a by-right use. So if they were to come, if a subsequent owner, per se, were to come in and ask for an ADU, they could go through a building permit process and get approval of that, as long as they met the requirements of our ADU ordinance.
And there's nothing about these ADUs in this plan that you would say doesn't meet our ADU requirements?
That's correct, Commissioner Zick. These ADUs are just shown for reference as the applicant was intending on doing so.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioners, anyone else? Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you. Just for public reference, why does SB 9 not apply to this property? Bringing out every Senate bill.
Yeah, so SB 9 doesn't apply in this case, because SB 9 only applies to any single-family residential zone properties. Fortunately, for this one, it's a multifamily zone lodge. So that's why they had to go through this process instead.
Okay. The, I guess, actually, this image works really well for my next question. The parkway, I got the area between the sidewalk and the street, does that also have to follow the landscaping requirements listed in the staff report, and who has to maintain that strip?
So the landscaping in the parkway would be subject to public works requirements, and will be in compliance with that, but the overall maintenance or the long-term maintenance of that would be the responsibility of the adjacent owners.
All right. And this was kind of asked and answered, but I'll ask again. If the ADUs in the back of the lot follow all of our code requirements, and this item tonight is approved, is there any chance that they are not going to be permitted or constructed?
Not from the city's perspective. That would be a decision of the developer property owner in the future. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Anyone else? Yeah, vice chair?
On slide six, there's a jog in the property line. What's that for?
I think that might be a good question for the applicant.
Okay.
I looked at that also and wondered about that.
Sorry, go back to where we were. Slide 10. That shows what looks like a six-foot property wall within 10 feet of the property line, which would, as far as I understand the code, not be allowed, right? I know the staff report, and we all know that that's going to be permitted separately, right, and reviewed. But that is true, right? You wouldn't, like, just looking at this, we know the code wouldn't allow this, right?
The rendering is intended to show design intent.
Okay.
But it will be permitted separately. It will be reviewed separately. I think there was, Jeffrey had mentioned, there was a condition to submit the landscape plans to us for the permit, so we will do another more thorough review, if you will, to make sure that the height and the placement of the fences and walls are compliant with our code.
Okay.
If we, if we could go back to your last question, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, yeah. The jog in the property line.
The jog in the property line?
Yeah.
I think that's probably a question that the applicant, when he has a chance to speak, can maybe address. My recollection is, if you look on the left-hand side of the shaded parcel, there is a five-foot easement that runs down that side, and I believe there are some overhead power lines, and my guess is there may be some power poles that are within that easement area. So in order to provide that lot or that ADU with maybe a comparable amount of uninterrupted outdoor space as the ADU on the adjacent property, there was a little jog in the property line back there. I think that was the reason, but I'll let the applicant also address that when they get a chance to speak.
Okay. Thank you. And I know I could look this up. I just want clarification on parking. That's the bottom of page six. Is the applicant proposing more onsite spaces than are required, or the right amount?
They're meeting the minimum requirement.
Okay. So the minimum requirement is four and four for each single-family house, not the ADUs?
That's correct.
Okay. It's that table that threw me off.
It's that table that threw me off. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. I have a couple of questions. We turn to agenda page nine and 10. We'll see in exhibit six, landscape plans for parcel one and two, that the, I believe it's on exhibit seven for parcel two, there's a tree that's out on the street next to the sidewalk. I wanted to see what the nature of your conversations has been with the applicant to put more trees on the sidewalk, seeing as how that's a city policy. And if applicable, if we could consider more trees on the parkway.
Chair, I would perhaps defer that conversation to the applicant when they speak. I don't think we've had specifically that conversation with them, but as you mentioned, right, the providing more shade and cover within the streets is something that the city does support. So I think generally speaking, we would be open to that, provided that the adjacent property owners would be responsible for the long-term maintenance of it.
And I know as a tree city, we have a tree funded, well, we have a funded program for trees, for people who want to build more trees on the parkway. So thank you. One more question, I believe, just to confirm, based off of conditions of approval in page 10 of the COA and also the CRNRs on page 12, alluding to the garage space, just wanted to confirm, no building additional bedrooms in the garages. Is that correct? This is specifically for parking and not for storage or for additional housing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And I think that's enough for me for now. Anyone else want to take a second swing? All right, we can do that later. All right, we'll move things along. Thank you very much, Mr. Ramondo. I will now open the public hearing and ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to come up. So if we have them out here. All right. Yes, sir. And if you would, sir, please do a few things for me. If you would, let me know your name, let us know if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval and if you agree to them.
Okay. My name is Grant Bixby, applicant, also the property owner and developer. Yes, I have read the staff report, as has my architect, who's also here today. And generally, I'm in agreement with everything you've said and the conditions therein. I do have maybe a couple of questions and I'd like to answer some of yours as well. But first, a little background. From an education standpoint, I have an appreciation for what you do. I have a background in urban studies, planning and development. And then I'm a real estate broker, residential broker, and probably greater than 50% of my business is done here in the city of Costa Mesa. And I have a home in Costa Mesa. And so I have a vested interest in the quality of our neighborhoods, the safety of our neighborhoods. And I approached this project with that in mind. I chose Keith Palmer of Bryant Palmer &amp; Soto as my architect for several reasons. One, I have experienced and sold property in some of his projects in Costa Mesa. They're much nicer looking than a lot of the other new construction in Costa Mesa. I wish everybody would hire Keith. And also, he's got familiarity with the city and has done quite a lot of work with your planning and building department here. So that was another key reason for hiring Keith. Just in general, Commissioner, I'll just kind of go down the line here as I took notes when you were talking. So Commissioner Zick, hope I pronounced that correctly? Okay. In terms of the intended use, I have not had an opportunity to speak with either property owner of the vacant land to the north. I know that immediately to the north, it is one contiguous lot that there's an apartment building off of Canyon and it is apparently the same ownership there. The other lot I am not as familiar with. There is an elevation change between my property and the property to the north. It drops down significantly and we will be significantly enhancing and shoring up our pad and the drainage right now, which drains to the rear, which is not a great condition for either property. We are draining it to the street. In terms of the ADU path of travel, yes, there will be an actual sidewalk off of the driveway to the right side of each lot. So each lot on the east, there will be an outer gate and then they walk down a lit pathway. It'll be low landscape, down lighting, so there won't be trip hazards and that sort of thing as they proceed down the right side of the property. Then there's not a gate shown here attached to the single-family in the front or a fence that separates that side yard, sort of the rear yard, I guess, of the front house. But that will be completely fenced off, so there will be privacy. Then they'll have another entry gate that they will enter their front patio area through. The window placement on the right side of the houses are all very sensitive to providing privacy to the inhabitants of the single-family up front. Terms of, okay, I think that was your, those were your questions. Commissioner Martinez, the parkway landscape responsibilities, again, I would love more clarity on that. My understanding was that as the property owner, we would most likely be maintaining that. But I believe that sometimes the cities do have a plan where they will come and do some tree trimming or Edison will if they're near a power pole, that kind of thing. And I also appreciate, Commissioner Martinez, your comment about the ADU approval, as long as we are meeting city guidelines to be a by-right approval. So thank you. And Scott Drapkin, thank you for pointing that out. And Commissioner Toller, the jog in the property, the staff description was spot-on for that as well. Because of that easement, we wanted to make sure that the ADU on, that each ADU would have the opportunity to have a nice kind of wide welcoming opening and a nice outdoor space where they might be able to, you know, put a couch or a bistro table and chairs to, you know, something nice outside, have some usable outdoor space. If we did not do that jog, it just would have felt too cramped, in my opinion. And that was Keith's suggestion. In terms of the height of the entry wall, again, we're happy to work with the planning department. And in terms of what's permissible, I think we were maybe under the impression that we were back far enough from the outer property line to have that six-foot height wall. We thought it provided kind of a mix of privacy and security for the front parcels, the front single families. But we're happy to work with planning to come up with a suitable solution for that. And then Commissioner Toller, also, I think your last question was regarding parking, but our understanding is that for ADUs, there are no additional parking requirements. My own experience in the neighborhood is that there's quite a lot of available street parking out front. And we also reduced the driveway apron width at the request of the planning and building, planning department, rather, and transportation, I think, to leave more curb available. So we did that, but still maintained a wider driveway parking area off-street, so people aren't having to step out into landscaping when they park their cars. And Chair Erith, happy to have that discussion about trees on the parkway and work with you on that. And I would absolutely love to hear about any funding for that. Be appreciated. And then regarding our garages, you know, just about everywhere on the project, we tried to exceed the city requirements with respect to open space. We are at about 45%, I think, roughly. In terms of the second-story coverage, we've brought them in significantly and there's a lot of articulation. And so that's, that was something that we're sensitive to. And then the garages are oversized and the thought there is the ability to store trashcans, but also to encourage people to actually park in their garage, you know, further alleviating potential street parking issues. And also, you know, with people with bikes and surfboards and all the things people love to do in Costa Mesa, to give them the space to store that in the garage along with their cars. And then lastly, I did not have the opportunity to read the one letter that was received. And the only comment I heard was that they were against the McMansions. So am I. I hate McMansions. I would not design one and that's not what these are. They're 2,200 square feet. They're very tasteful. I think we struck a great balance between the single-family, that's also two stories and larger than ours, to the east, and then large, high-density apartment buildings immediately to the west. We're kind of right in between the two and we fit well within the neighborhood and surrounding properties. So I'm available for any other questions, as is my architect here, Keith Palmer. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bixby. Thank you for answering all of our questions preemptively and also sharing the fact that you have a background in urban regional planning. You're in good company. So welcome. Colleagues, Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bixby. And I had one question and you're the right guy to answer it, particularly with your Compass brokerage. My question has to do with the market that this is being built for, how you perceive the market for this property. Do you see this as being marketed for an owner-occupied house who is immediately going to look to put a renter in their backyard in the ADU? Or are you perceiving this more as an investor-income-opportunity property?
Okay. I love that question. The answer is both and I designed it to be extremely appealing to either audience. There's enough privacy for an owner to say, I want to live in the front house and I want to help supplement my mortgage by having somebody in the ADU behind me and I get to pick who that person is, so I'm comfortable living and sharing a property with that person. It's also, I think, very, the neighborhood has, I would say, a big mix of renters and also an owner-occupied. And so it could appeal to somebody in a 1031 exchange who is an investor, who says, you know what, I want to buy a property that is new, so I won't have to worry about deferred maintenance and, you know, it'll be great for 10 or 20 years and have a builder warranty for new construction that goes with it. So I think it could appeal to a wide variety of people. And, you know, it may be one person buys both lots or, and I may keep one. And I have two college-aged kids, so I may be the owner of one and just sell the other.
Okay. I think the front exterior, by the way, looks fantastic. Your architect or you, who's ever conceived it, I think, did a great job. Last question. When you start construction on this, assuming you have approval, are you going to be building the ADU at the same time or are you going to hold off on starting construction on that until you understand the sale opportunity?
Our understanding in discussions with the city is that we have to do a separate permit process for the ADU, but I would love it if that could happen very quickly so that we could build simultaneously. I don't want to have the construction out of courtesy for the neighbors to last any longer than it needs to. We'd like to get in and take care of it.
So if you're building the ADU at the same time, would it be safe to say that this would not be a property that a family looking simply to buy a single-family home without fooling around with an ADU would be interested in? This almost has to be appealing to somebody that wants to have a renter on their property.
Correct. Or, you know, a relative who's older and single-level and wants to live onsite, that kind of thing.
I get that. That's the minority of uses. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else? Vice Chair?
You said you had, let's see, where's bedroom four? Do we have a site plan with bedroom four on it? You said there were going to be, that's where the ADU occupants are going to be walking by to reach their little house back there. So, yeah, I was just going to ask, like, what privacy measures you had in mind for that bedroom?
So if you're looking at this and you look at the back right corner of bedroom four, there's a, it's not shown, I think, on the landscape plan, but from that corner of the wall, there will be a fence that runs north-south. It's going to be a short, I think it's, I think we have three feet there. So it'll be a three-feet section of fence. So that will be fixed so that the person walking down the side yard there will not have any views into any window or any access to the yard to be able to look into the window there. On that bedroom wall there, on the east side, there is no window. So the only window is on the, is facing north in that bedroom. And that, the back tenant won't have any view into that. And then the front house and the ADU are separated by a six-foot-high fence.
The, between the ADU and the house is a six-foot-high fence. I get that. But walking along the side of the house, there's a five-yard setback. I guess I'm looking at the east house. So there's a five-foot setback and that's how they get to the ADU, right?
On the east side, yes, it's five.
Yeah. So there'll be a bedroom, there'll be someone's bedroom window?
No.
There's no window?
There's no window on that particular wall. And then, again, that three-foot section is not shown. It should be, it's on, it's on each corner of the back right corner of the single-family in the front. There should be a little section that just connects that corner to the fence that runs east and west, that separates the ADU and the single-family. So they wouldn't be walking past any window and they would not have access to that three-foot side, sort of rear yard in the, in the back of the single-family.
All right. It looks like you're creating a parkway. This street doesn't have a parkway, but you're jogging the sidewalk to, going to create one. Was that, was that the city's idea or requirement or yours?
That is a requirement, I believe, for AD, excuse me, for the ADA, to have a flat section for handicapped or, you know, anybody that, you know, can get around so that they're not having to actually travel through the apron at an angle and go down.
And dodge utility poles.
Right. Exactly.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else? Commissioner Martinez?
Do we have access to the site plans to present, either A 2.1 or A 2.2?
Is this what you're looking for, Commissioner, the floor plans?
I think it's just a little bit cut off to the point I was going to be making. So.
You have the floor plans or?
Well, Commissioner Martinez, I think, we have, we don't have any additional graphics in what we.
So we don't have the?
We don't have the full plan set electronically that we could share.
Okay. Okay. In that case, I'll just refer for everyone up here, I'm looking at the blueprints. And if you want to go to the other slide with the floor plan. So bedroom number four, at the bottom between the, like, between the bedroom and the walking closet on the east wall, is that going to be a window or is it not going to be a window?
I'll have to ask Keith, that is a window, but the height of that window is going to be, it's more for light and so I think that's going to be a high-square window.
It's like a clear story window?
Right. Clear story.
Yeah.
Commissioner Martinez, if you look at page, I would say, IA 5.2, for example, and then in the lower left-hand corner.
There's also another window in the shower, but that's going to be frosted glass there and that'll also be a high window. So there's privacy.
Gotcha. And then just for reference, there's a diamond 16 with single-hung vertical sliding is what it says on the blueprint, which is, it's cut off here. What does, what does that mean, quite simply, so that we know what other privacy measures there are in place?
I'm going to let Keith answer that, my architect.
Yeah.
Hello. Hello, I'm Keith Palmer. I'm an architect. Thank you for pointing that out and letting me explain it further. So we've done a bunch of homes recently in Costa Mesa. So we've done a bunch of homes recently in Costa Mesa that this, this design is actually modeled after. And in this farmhouse style that we developed when we did a Midtown project over on, on the west side, initially, we chose to use what we call single-hung windows, which are, the fixed portion is at the top, and the bottom portion slides up. We all grew up, or maybe not all of us, I grew up with double-hung windows, which would, both panels would slide, and you could literally open portion of each side. In today's world, it's more cost-effective to do a single-hung window, and you get the same look. So we're purposely designing that for two square panes of glass stacked on top of each other, for the look, quite honestly. But you also get ventilation from that as well. So over the years, we've been asked, and we did a privacy line sight diagram on this package as well, showing that there are options on how to deal with that glass. One of the options is to frost the glass, or put a film on any portion that is privacy-sensitive, let's say, which sometimes is the bottom portion. We can also use what I call cafe curtains for the draperies that go up or down, or, like I just put in my house, I've got, I've got, like accordion shears that go up or down, so that I can open up the top part and see the sky, and leave the bottom part opaque, basically, with a transparent shield. And so I find that to be extremely versatile, because I, I'd rather look out and see the sky and get the sunlight into that side of the room than to close it off because we're concerned that my grandmother, who's living in the back house, is going to look in my bedroom. Which kind of speaks to the question about the purpose of the ADUs. I think a potential buyer would be somebody like me when I was growing up, or when I was raising my kids and needed to house my mother. So it's a perfect situation for a young couple that has the income and wants mom, or mom and dad, to live in the ADU next door to them, be their nannies, their babysitters during the day, and have their own privacy at night. So this, I think, will be a new lifestyle trend for the young, successful people, like my daughter, who just bought one of the houses we designed over by the Boys Club, to be able to accommodate grandma or somebody else that can live on their property, take care of their kids while they're off at work being professionals. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And then, my last thing, the path to the ADUs on, well, it's on both houses, the path itself, I think, is also, I don't know, doored in? There's a door to access that path. And that path would be accessible to both the ADU owner and the actual main house owner because of the door that's on the side of the garage, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Anyone else? No? Nope? I don't have any questions either. Commissioner Andrade.
Yeah. Why, I'm curious, you mentioned these are two, two properties, so to maybe support or house two separate families, and maybe, you know, a couple of renters or family in the ADUs. In your development here, when this property was made, when you had access to it, was there any consideration of making it a, something that can house more, more housing opportunities for our community here locally?
That was a question that also Commissioner Martinez had for me and over the phone. The answer is, there was actually not a lot of flexibility in terms of what we could do there, due to small lot ordinance and, and sort of the minimum lot size if we were going to do detached. And I have personally less experience in building apartment buildings and that kind of thing. And so I feel like we, again, it was not just within my general comfort zone, so I didn't explore what may have been permissible along those lines.
I see. So just out of lack of experience, how about, how about the architect? Is that any experience in how to maximize such a wonderful lot size like this for additional housing?
Thank, thank you for asking. I'm working on a project right now that somebody bought a similarly-sized lot, wanted to build two homes and two ADUs. I've got a layout currently that will do a, a two-story ADU on those properties, so that would work. I have another property that is a multifamily property now, and they're going to tear down one of the units that's there now, and we're going to build two ADUs stacked on top of each other. We've been working with Chris Jaeger on that property, and we'll be submitting that, we actually just submitted it last week. So this ADU trend, you might say, that you've been probably seeing a lot of recently, was not really that available to us 10 years ago, when we did the project over at East Haven by the Boys Club, or some of the other places that we've done in the past. But it, it's a wonderful opportunity for increasing the housing yield. And I think some of these experiments that we're doing now are going to be guinea pigs for literally stacked ADUs to get more yield out of the footprint of the building. Typically, the ADUs are one-story. But the two-story works out fine, too. The one I'm doing, or I'm designing now is about, I'm trying to think, I think it's 850 square feet, and it has two bedrooms, and two baths upstairs, and a great room with a kitchen, open living room downstairs. So I think it's, you know, quite comfortable unit.
Yeah. Yeah. And for the property owner, I mean, and kind of like the market out there, are there a lot of property owners looking for five-bedroom homes? Like, are families that big nowadays? I thought the trend is going down as far as how large families are nowadays.
Grant can probably speak to it, but I can tell you a real-life story, okay? My daughter, who's a dentist, and her husband, who is an orthodontist, just bought one of the homes that I designed over by the Boys Club. It's 2,400 square feet. We designed it initially as three-bedroom with loft or four-bedroom. She bought the one that is four-bedroom. She has her two daughters living in two of the bedrooms. She uses the other bedroom for her in-laws that like to come from Midwest to visit, and of course, their bedroom. So now there's no place for me to stay. But, so, yeah, I think there still will be a demand for that. You also have a lot of people that are working out of their homes. In my daughter's case, they're not working out of their home, but I know a lot of other young professionals that actually do a lot of work at home. I have a nephew, for instance, he and his wife both are, work at home, and they really need to have a room that they can shut the door, because they're on Zoom calls and all of that other kind of stuff, and you can't deal with the kids crying, the dog barking, and the, so, yeah, I think there's going to continue to be a demand for that extra room. It's one of the reasons Grant asked for the fourth bedroom on the ground floor on these plans, so that he has that flexibility. That can be a playroom for the kids, it can be, grandma can live there or stay there overnight. So, yeah, I think that's going to, that's going to continue to be a trend.
Great.
Yeah, and just, just to add on to that a little bit, yeah, so we didn't do the five-bedrooms, but we did do four with the little loft in between upstairs, just kind of like a homework station or another area to have sort of two living spaces. But what COVID did to our local real estate market was, we were, we were in a trend where people were actually prioritizing outdoor space and, and okay with less interior living space, but with COVID, that changed everything. People couldn't go to gyms, so now they want a space for their home gym, and they want a home office. And if the husband and wife are both working, or whoever the head of household is, if they're, if they're two earners in the home, they, they both want a space to work where it's quiet and they can close the door. So we are seeing that trend kind of move in the other direction, so.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Anyone else? Commissioner Klepak.
Yeah, I'm just curious, there's HOA that's referenced on page six of our packet. Can you explain how that works? It's a two-member HOA, and how do disputes get settled?
Keith may have more familiarity with that. That was actually a staff mention, and I believe, I don't know that that was, was that in our package? But I know there's an attorney that, that will draft those, and, and my understanding is that it is to just specify who takes care of, you know, what areas, but since these are, since the rear property is not owned by, not owned by, you know, separately, it's just one owner for the front and the back, I think the only area is where the two properties meet. There's some landscaping that's going to kind of butt up against each other, but, so above-ground, it might look contiguous, but underground, that landscaping will have all separate controls, one for each property. So there may be something to do with that.
Okay. I was just curious, so there's not necessarily dues or fees that are monthly? It's just who takes care of what, or who's responsible for what?
I think it's probably just to clarify for the owner.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Klepak. Commissioner Zick.
Commissioner Klepak raised an interesting question, and so I'm kind of interested in the more fulsome response from staff. If the front house and the ADU are owned by the same person, and that is on one parcel, who in the world is the association with?
Commissioner, I'll go ahead and take that one. I believe we would be safe in deleting that condition if you want to. To your point, there are two properties, each that are facing the public street. There is a property line down the middle. They are separate ownerships.
Yeah.
There is no need for any common maintenance between the two properties.
Right.
The condition was in there because I believe there is language, don't ask me to quote it, but there is language within the small lot ordinance that talks about establishing CCNRs. As the commission is probably aware, many of our small lot ordinance developments involve many more properties, six, eight, all the way up to 15 properties. And typically, what happens is there's a common drive aisle down the middle of them, and they run sort of perpendicular from the street, and they go deep.
Right.
And those then face, those homes then face off of that common alleyway, and there needs to be some common, you know, ingress-and-egress rights, there needs to be common maintenance in those cases. This is a, this is a qualifying type of development for the small lot ordinance, but it is designed differently than the typical.
Yeah.
And because of that, I don't think we need that condition.
I agree. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else? Commissioner, yeah, Martinez.
So, just to clarify your, I guess, now recommendation, would it be all three conditions that are mentioned in that section, which is 17, 18, and 19? Or is there a specific, like, phrase in the conditions of approval that might?
I, I don't have the conditions memorized. I will take you at your word that those three, that any condition that refers to the need to establish an HOA or CCNRs or common maintenance, those types of conditions would not be relevant in this case.
Okay.
If I so, may, what we'll do is we'll approach the city attorney with the question and look at the site plan in more detail. And then, before the resolution gets recorded, we'll make sure that's changed or modified as needed.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Dropkin. That was going to be my follow-up, was just to research it by the time we come to a vote. All right. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Bixby, thank you so much. You're welcome to take a seat for the moment. We'll call you back up in a minute. I'll now open up the hearing for public comments. If you'd like to speak to this item, please come to either podium. You'll have three minutes to speak, and at the one-minute mark, you hear a little chime. And I swear, it's not me, it'll just cut off right at the three-minute mark. So we'll start with you, sir. Welcome.
How you doing? My name's Mel, and I just want to say, this idea of affordable housing, building affordable housing is a myth. I mean, who can afford $2 to $4 million for a house? You guys are young professionals, well, maybe some of you are not so young, but, you know. Plus, the money at six to seven, five to six percent doubles every 10 years. So you're, you're looking at $8 to $10 million. Can you afford a mortgage like that? As far as the ADUs, that's another one of Governor Newsom's little experiments, and we're already $60 billion an experiment in the hole. So, you know, do you want to be a guinea pig? Do you want Costa Mesa to be a guinea pig? That's what you have to ask yourself. Now, as far as the parking, the ADUs have no parking, no driveway. How many of you use your garages for storage? Honestly. Honestly. Now, so you got two in the, in the garages, two in the carport, where are the rest of these going to, going to park? You have two ADUs that are built in the back, can house two to four people, so that's maybe four to six cars per unit. So that's an average of 16 to 24 cars. You're out into streets that are one lane on Canyon and one lane on Wilson. We were not designed to be used like this. Second, his drainage is going to go right into the street. If you go out to the site, I don't know if you guys visited that area, it dips right there at Canyon, and it goes all the way out to Victoria. You're going to flood out all of these houses when you, when the rains come. And last, energy, water, and, well, we already covered traffic, but we're already in an energy crisis. The Houthis are shutting down the Red Sea, the Saudis are ready, and the Chinese, and Iranians, and the Russians are all cutting their oil. And you want to, all these McMansions, they are built with AC and heating only. You cannot open it up and cool it off or heat it with the air. So where are we going to get the energy? And they already said, the water, we had a one-year anomaly, and it's going to be, then we're back to a drought situation, 100-year drought. Where are we going to get the water? Are we going to build a D cell plant in Huntington Beach now? Think about it, guys. Do you want to be a guinea pig?
All right. Thank you. Mr. Huffman, how are you? Welcome.
Okay, there we go. So Rick Huffman, resident of Costa Mesa. So I'm aware of, all over town, ADUs are happening. It's a very popular thing to do. I'm so glad that, that it is happening. It's a, it's a perfect example, Russell, of the missing middle being built. And so it will be an attractive addition to that neighborhood. I just wish that they could do something about the house across the street from it. It's probably the least attractive house in all of Costa Mesa. It's very weird-looking. But anyway, it's just a great addition to the neighborhood, and I commend the developer and the architect for innovative design and, and working with a difficult lot and coming up with a good solution. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? Right. Seeing none. Anna, if we go to Zoom or telephone?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And colleagues, if you have any further questions for the applicant? No further questions? All right. Thank you. Mr. Bixby or Mr. Palmer, if you have any closing comments, you're certainly welcome to make them, otherwise... Otherwise, you're welcome to forego. Up to you.
I'll keep them brief, but in terms of landscaping, permeable surfaces, we're trying to hold as much water onsite as possible. And then everything goes into city sewer as per plan and as is the requirement. And then with respect to heating and AC and energy needs, we're going to be doing dual pane windows, all the latest and greatest in terms of energy efficiencies in the house. I'm a big proponent of solar on the roof as well. And we'll keep that out of sight from the street because it'll be up high, so it won't be unsightly. So we're doing our best to make it a high-quality project and that will enhance the neighborhood. We're going from providing, well, actually, it was vacant, so no one was technically living there, but it was a one-family living onsite and we're going to allow for potentially four to be onsite. So I just want to thank you for all your time and effort and the work that you do.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Bixby. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for staff on this item?
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Andrade.
So for staff, are there, I know we recently looked at our housing ordinance for, you know, commercial areas to take opportunities to build housing. So for these residential areas that have opportunities, are there any existing incentives for developers and property owners to create more housing for our local community?
Commissioner Andrade, as it applies to this property, I don't think so. I mean, the property is owned R2. The developer, the property owner, has the opportunity to propose a project that either conforms with the R2 standards or, as in this case, they opted to utilize the small lot ordinance, both of which are viable options on the property. This is also a project that would not fall under the provisions of the Affordable Housing Ordinance quite yet. It's, I guess, too few units in that respect. So really, it's just the existing zoning provisions, which, you know, the applicant has already indicated that they prefer to go down the path of the small lot development for this property because that's kind of in their area of expertise.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Anyone else? Will we move things along? Before I close the public hearing, if I can turn to Director Dropkin and Mr. Prezioci to weigh in on the CCNR question from earlier, appreciate an update.
Thank you, Chair Earth. So if you look at the Costa Mesa Medical Code, Table 13.42, Small Lot Subdivision Standards, the documents required seem to be premised on the concept of requiring maintenance of any and all open spaces, recreational areas, and commonly-used areas of facilities. So I would defer to planning staff whether there are, in fact, common areas or if each lot is individually owned, there are no common areas between the two lots.
Thank you, Mr. Prezioci. Director Dropkin?
There is none. There are two individual lots.
Two individual lots. So to my interpretation, we can theoretically waive certain sections of the conditions of approval pertaining to CCNRs?
Correct.
Okay. I assume a couple of my colleagues were keeping track of those conditions of approval that comport with those CCNRs?
I'm aware of this.
You are? Okay. Thanks, Director Dropkin. Okay. Before we close the public hearing, anything else, colleagues? All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Martinez.
I move that we find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per Sequo Guidelines Section 15, 315, Class 15 Minor Division of Land, and Section 15, 303, Class 3, new construction or conversion of small structures and approved design review PDES 24-0001 and parcel map PTPM 24-0001, tentative parcel map 2023-187, based on findings and fact and subject to conditions of approval, with conditions of approval 17, 18, 19 being removed, and also condition of approval 10 being removed, which is a duplicate of number eight.
Before we seek a second, just to clarify, those are the CCNR provisions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. I believe condition of approval number 24 also references CCNRs and should be included in that.
I meant my motion to include number 24 to be removed.
Okay. Point of clarification, are there any additional conditions of which you named that are not a part of the CCNR discussion from earlier?
Number 10 is a duplicate of condition of approval number eight.
Okay. So not delete eight, but delete 10 as a duplicate?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Toyer. Would you like to speak to your motion, Commissioner Martinez?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Toyer or Vice Chair Toyer?
Sure. I'll speak. I'm in, let's see. So motions to approve this, obviously. I agree with Commissioner Zick. Those renderings look fantastic. I mean, the buildings themselves look fantastic and the renderings are really good. I would like to see, you know, you look at the thing, I'm just going to have some comments here. I'm not going to mess with the motion or try to do any redesigns, but just since we're on this subject, this subject of small lot ordinances, just a little bit of commentary. You look at this in plan view and it looks fantastic. You see, oh, there's some porches up front. And then you see those renderings and that, you know, kind of that freeway sound wall block and the gate. I've kind of winced a little bit, like I really detracted from it. I know there's security concerns, but I would hope that we would get, you know, a nice porch on the front. I know you got to do, I think, a lot of this is just internal conversation with the city, but four spaces per unit is insane. And it's a wonder that you were able to figure that out and design it. And it's thanks to state law that exempts ADUs from parking requirements. Otherwise, this wouldn't even be possible. They'd stay that little single-family home. And I appreciate that you were kind of forced into putting those garage doors right on the front, which I think is suboptimal, but at least you made them look nice. I appreciate that. And then again, internal conversation, we're getting these all over the city where you take a lot, whether it's, this is about a quarter acre, whether it's an acre, two acres, 10 acres. And what developers are doing is cramming as many single-family homes. These are four single-family homes, right? Let's be real. As many on a site as you can. And it comes with kind of some awkward privacy problems, right? You walk down the hallway and there's a bedroom right there and you kind of have what I call these like back-of-the-donkey suit, like kind of awkwardly placed back units. And yes, we all understand what ADUs are and the benefits of them, and I think most of us agree with that. But the reason we're getting those is because we have low-density requirements and high parking standards. And we are efficient, there's other reasons that developers are providing these and no criticism to the applicant for doing what's most profitable and what makes sense, given the constraints that they're working under. But I feel like as a city, if we're okay with densifying our neighborhoods, with having more housing opportunities in existing neighborhoods and turning up the density level a little bit, then let's not hold back. Because when we hold back, we're getting these kind of projects everywhere when maybe they should be clicking up. You know, there's Washington State just passed a missing middle bill where they have ordinances and going forth in all the cities now where you could build fourplexes, sixplexes, the kinds of missing middle housing that Rick Huffman mentioned. And they just do it. So on a 10,000-square-foot lot, what could you build if we wanted to do, if we were okay with, you know, a tenplex, you know, a cottage, something besides just a bunch of single-family homes, kind of awkwardly crammed in on a lot? I've mentioned this one before in Portland, the Residential Infill Program, RIP. They have a really cool and successful program where they're enabling missing middle housing through zoning in their neighborhoods, where they even have incentives where you get extra units if one's affordable, something like that. So I think Costa Mesa, at some point, we keep approving these, let's just take the leap and create an ordinance where we're allowing density, but density done a little more thoughtfully and the way we used to, right? Anyway, I obviously won't let those opinions get in the way. This applicant followed the rules that we set before them. They did a great job. It looks good. And I'm glad to see four units going in.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Zick.
I'll be supporting the motion. I'm not a big fan of ADUs. And when I saw your plan, I thought, I don't really understand this. I don't really understand the marketing of a development like this. But you told me what your plan was. What I give a great deference to is the fact that you're the owner of the land. It's your development and you're building what you want to build. Could you have built a fourplex or sixplex? Yeah, probably. Is that what you wanted to do? No. Who owns the land? You do. This is your development. I give great deference to your choices there. Did you want to provide a garage for two cars and driveway? I don't know. You had to. You did. I'm glad you did. I can't imagine too many people who'd want to buy a million-dollar-plus home and then have to put their cars out on the street, have to fight to find parking, maybe half a block away, maybe a block away. You come home with groceries. You schlepp them to your house. You want your kids and you to go somewhere. So now you're schlepping all this stuff from the house down the sidewalk to your car. I don't know too many people that want to live that way. I like what you've come up with here. I'm vaguely familiar with missing middle development based on my fellow commissioners' repeated emails to me over the years of various housing concepts. I don't think an ADU in the backyard is the missing middle concept that he's talked about. I'm looking at you, but this isn't your plan. We may, in this city, lack what's frequently referred to as missing middle housing, but it isn't an ADU in somebody's backyard. And that isn't affordable housing. We had a public speaker talk about ADUs. I resonate with a lot of what he said about them. But if you want to put a family member in those, that's what a good use for them is. You want to rent them out to somebody? I suppose that's a good use. If somebody wants to walk down the side of somebody else's house to where they sleep, that's a personal choice. They can do that. They don't mind their car being out on the street? That's a personal choice. They can do that. I'll support this application and good luck to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade, any thoughts? Nope. Okay. Commissioner Klepak? All right. I will go ahead and support the motion if staff can make mention of this in the minutes that move on to encourage and also actively seek this out, to encourage working with the applicant to discuss the tree care, tree planting program, particularly along the parkway. I don't think I need to ask for a friendly amendment for that, just to make good faith effort on that front. I will say, you know, for as long as I've been up here, the discussion of housing and particularly home ownership has been central to my interests. And I think you'll note from the many discussions we had, particularly in discussion about the housing element in our most recent cycle, that Costa Mesa is woefully imbalanced when it comes to rentership and ownership. And I really do encourage the city to continue pursuing ownership opportunities like the ones that we're seeing here in this item. So outside of the fact that it's a beautiful design, I think anyone would love living there, and it's increasing the housing stock and the equity and ownership opportunities in the city, just philosophically, having more people who actually own in this community versus, to the contrary, is something that we should continue pursuing. So I appreciate you putting this application forward on those grounds. Similar to some of what Commissioner Zick was mentioning about cars and garages, yes, you were compelled to have to do it. But I think it's, you know, for anyone who has a job and has made money and wants to move up and have some kind of equity wherever they live, be it homeownership or otherwise, garages kind of go hand-in-hand with that. You end up buying a car, you end up having to commute. That's reality. Now, our community is making good faith efforts to diversify the type of transportation that we're seeking in a mix around the city, so giving people more opportunities to walk, to bike, having things be more balanced on that front. But I don't think garages are going anywhere anytime soon. Cars aren't going anywhere anytime soon. To think otherwise is, it's, yeah, wishful thinking. So with that, I will be happy to support this motion. And Anna, if we could call the question?
That motion carries 6-0.
All right. Thank you very much. That decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck, Mr. Bixby and Mr. Palmer. Thank you. We'll go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll see you back here at 8:35.
We'll go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll see you back here at 8:35. All right. Welcome back to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, May 13, 2024. I call the meeting back into order, and Anna, if you'd please read the title for public hearing, item number two. I'd appreciate it.
Public hearing, item number two, PDEV-23-0001, amending certain provisions to One Metro West Development Agreement, DA-20-02 ordinances and resolutions. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the, to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
All right. Thank you, Anna. Starting to my left, Commissioner Martinez.
I had a meeting with the applicant.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Kleepak?
Yes. I wanted to disclose that in 2018 or 2019, when I was resident Kleepak, I wrote a letter to the city regarding this project, just saying that I thought the city needed more housing, but I wanted to see fuel substitution from gas to electric. That was several iterations of Title 24 code ago, so I guess, I think we've progressed past that point, and it's kind of moot. Doesn't cloud my ability to, to be impartial and listen to facts of this, and I also had a phone call with the applicant this morning.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that disclosure. Thank you. Commissioner Zick? All right. Commissioner Andrade? Commissioner, or Vice Chair, tell her.
Yeah, I had a meeting with the applicant a few weeks ago.
All right. Thank you, and I have no communications to report, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Rodriguez to present the item. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. I'm Bill Rodriguez for the Development Services Department. The item before you is a proposed amendment to some of the entitlement documents for One Metro West. One Metro West, for those of you who may not be familiar, what the site is located at, 1683 Sunflower. It's on the north side of the 405 freeway between Highland and, in effect, of the Santa Ana River. The project was approved by the City Council back in July of 2021, I believe. It was approved subject to the provisions at that time of Measure Y. The project that was approved is shown here on this graphic. It includes 1,057 residential units, of which about 106 of them would be made affordable, more particularly 67 of them to households qualifying at very low income levels, and 39 of them qualifying at low income levels. The property has, on the left-hand side, you'll see a kind of a white space. That's about a one-and-a-half-acre privately-owned but publicly-accessible open space. There was approval of a three-level, 52-foot-high, 25,000-square-foot creative office space, which is shown in pink in the upper left. And then the, the residential project itself consisted, again, of the 1,057 residential units, divided between three residential buildings, one of them the largest being Building A, located kind of along the 405 freeway edge. It has some private recreation space shown in green and some amenity space shown in the, kind of the lavender color. Building C, located in the upper right-hand corner, also has some, kind of a red or pinkish-colored space. That is some onsite retail, approximating about 6,000 square feet of total area. Building heights for the project do vary, anywhere from about 78 feet to 98 feet and up to seven stories in height. This is a bird's-eye perspective, an oblique view of what the project would look like. This is kind of from the opposite angle. In this viewpoint, or vantage point, the 405 freeway is located to the top of the page. But again, gives you an idea of the height of the building, the relationships of the buildings, some of the internal circulation areas, the publicly-accessible private, open space off to the right. That will also eventually be kind of a staging area, if you will, for access to a modified or an updated bicycle trail that will get riders out to the Santa Ana River Trail. There, you'll also notice that there's a lot of green space, kind of some green rooftops. Those will be the private amenity spaces. They occur on different levels, some on top of the podium level, within the courtyards of the buildings, other, others on the upper stories, and eventually several of them on the rooftops of, of the three buildings that are proposed. So the proposed amendment is fairly narrow in scope, and the one thing to keep in mind is that there are no actual changes to the approved plans, as I've just described. The proposed buildings, the number of buildings, the height of the buildings, the architecture of the buildings, the general layout of the site plan would all remain the same. The applicant, however, is making three requests. One of them is to the development agreement. Another is to the, each of the modify, each of the ordinances that were adopted, and then a third to a condition of approval. I've got slides that will describe those proposed changes in much more detail. So we'll get into the development agreement amendment here. As part of this project, the applicant was required to pay, at a one-time fee, at the time of building permit issuance, about $16.5 million to the city of Costa Mesa. The applicant is now requesting to break that payment into two, two, two schedules, if you will. There would be a payment in year one and a payment in year five. There will be a 3% interest rate that the city benefits from, which will increase the total payment at the end of, by the end of year five from, or up to $17.8 million. The, the city staff has completed a fiscal analysis of their proposal. We've determined that the proposal is reasonable, and the, the 3% interest rate is appropriate. And so staff is fully supportive of spreading the payments into two and having, having the city receive the total payment of $17.8 million by the end of year five with, for the project. The second proposed amend, amendment to the project would be to modify the, the project's approval date. With the approving documents done by the City Council a couple, a few years back, it was subject, the approval date was July of 2021, subject to voter approval of Measure Y. In November of 2022, provisions of Measure Y were replaced, if you will, by Measure K for certain locations within the city. One of those locations is this property. Because of Measure K, the provisions of Measure Y requiring a vote of the electorate to effectuate the approval of this project no longer apply. And so the applicant is requesting that the language within the ordinances be modified to eliminate any reference to the project needing a vote of the, of the public in order to effectuate this approval. Again, staff is supportive of making that change because it just reflects the circumstances, the conditions that we, we are in today. The third request has to do with the project's artwork conditions of approval. As you may have noticed on the renderings that I had shown, there was a large parking structure that fronts the 405 freeway. That parking structure will rise significantly higher than the freeway sound walls. There was a requirement at the time that the, the exterior wall of that parking structure that faces the freeway be enhanced with either some landscaping and/or some artwork. There was some timing provisions also required of the applicant, that the artwork be submitted to the city for review. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant has asked for some modifications such that the timing of when that artwork needs to be submitted to the city is pushed back to a little later stage in the process. That proposed stage is when the, the, prior to the issuance of the first structural building permit, not just any building permit for the site, but it would be the structural permit related to the parking structure itself, which kind of makes sense from a timing perspective, from staff's perspective. The applicant is also requesting that we modify the final approving body. The, originally, the Planning Commission was to be the final approving body with review by the Cultural Arts Commission. The City Council has recently, I think it was last year, created an arts commission. And so the applicant would like the arts commission to be the final approving body for the artwork rather than the Planning Commission, that the, any requirements for landscaping on that parking structure also be eliminated. That isn't to say that the landscaping would not occur. It just makes it not a mandatory requirement to have landscaping. If, as part of the overall design for the parking structure, the applicant believes that landscaping has a role to play in enhancing the overall aesthetics of the building, it's still an option that they could present to the city that they could pursue. So it doesn't eliminate it. It just changes whether or not it is a mandatory requirement versus an option for them. I think that summarizes all of the requirements. I, I will note that relative to the I will note that relative to the artwork condition, there are two conditions of approval within the original entitling documents, one of which was condition number nine. Another one was condition number 66. Condition number nine specifically talked about the artwork being approved by the Planning Commission. Condition number 66 talked about the arts commission and was actually a mitigation measure out of the environmental document for the project. So if the commission is supportive of changing the final approving body from the Planning Commission to the Arts Commission, staff would recommend that the commission delete condition number nine and just proceed with condition number 66. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find that the project modifications are consistent with the previous environmental review that was done and also recommend that the City Council introduce for first reading an ordinance amending the development agreement regarding the timing and the payment of impact fees and community benefit fees and introduce for first reading an ordinance clarifying the project's effective approval date contained in the development agreement, rezone, and specific plan ordinances. And also, and finally, approve modifications to the City Council Resolution 2021-55, amending certain conditions of approval regarding the artwork on building a parallel to the 405 freeway. With that, I will close my remarks and be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here to address the Planning Commission. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I'll have a couple of questions for you, but I'll kick it around first. Commissioner Zick.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for your report. Couple of questions. First of all, just for context, the development agreement is for 25 years, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so in this proposal, at year five, the entirety of the payments will have been made, the 10 million and the 3 million, correct?
The, so just to maybe put a little finer point on it, it isn't necessarily year five of the development agreement's lifespan, but it would be five years from the day to the issuance of the first payment. So if they come in and pull a building permit, they would pay a portion of the fees. That would be the first installment. And then five years from that date, they would be responsible for making the second and final payment.
So consider this hypothetical. Let's say the, the building environment is such that it's not favorable to begin construction for another five years. Interest rates, all these sorts of things. That would, so what you're saying is there would be a first payment five years from now and then the entirety of the payment would be 10 years from now. If they didn't pull a permit to start construction, five years into the development agreement, that's when we'd see the first payment. And then five years later, 10 years into the development agreement, we'd see the entirety of the payment, correct?
In theory, correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, the next question I have is referencing Staff Report Page Five. The little table indicates the development impact fee figure of basically $10,500,000 approximately. My question is this. What does the city use the development impact fees for? I mean, it's not just ransom. So what is our intended use for these fees?
So typically, we would use those fees to go into a variety or several potential different funds to make improvements across the city. They could be used for roadway improvements. They could be used for parkway or improvements to public parks, things of that nature, things that would have a reasonable nexus to offsetting the impact that's created by having many more residents of the city utilizing public facilities. Right. So to my, to my knowledge, there is not a specific listing of specific projects where the money would be allocated to at this point in time, but it would be money that we receive, hold, and then would be, we would identify some type of capital improvement project in the future that would benefit from some of the offsets paid for by these fees.
And the idea is it's a nexus?
Correct.
With the impact to the development?
The, a little bit different because these are being agreed to through a development agreement. So the applicant and the city have negotiated the fees. So the, unlike an exaction where you would need a much stronger nexus, that kind of threshold doesn't really exist here. But in theory, the practice is about the same.
Got it. And then the second element there, the economic recovery and community enhancement. That sounds wonderful. What exactly is the intention for that $3 million?
Apologize, Commissioner Zick. I don't remember what that, how that money was intended to be spent.
So I might have a little bit to add for that. When this project was being reviewed, it was, it was, there was some issues with regards to the city status of being able to provide a funding source for issues like COVID and some other situations where the community might suffer impacts through whatever might cause financial impacts. And this would be put into a fund for those impacts. So basically, it was for an emergency-type fund and then also for certain sustainability issues that we would economically be able to benefit from.
So why would we make Rose Equities pay us $3 million for that? Maybe they're willing to. Why would we be doing that?
They are willing to. It was part of the agreement. We believe that at the time when there is it, that's part of a development agreement. When, when the city works with an applicant and the trade-off for having a 25-year project expiration date is providing certain community benefits, that was one of the community benefits that the applicant considered as a trade-off for having that potential lock of entitlements, so to speak.
All right, that's all I've got.
I was gonna say, Commissioner Zick, if you wouldn't mind, on Section 4.1.8 of the development, of the development agreement, it does address the Economic Recovery and Community Enhancement Fund, indicating that the city, in its sole and absolute discretion, the monies can be used to assist community enhancement programs and projects related to economic sustainability and recovery and/or to support essential governmental functions impacted during states of emergency and/or recovery therefrom and/or other community enhancement efforts such as park and open space acquisition, rehabilitation, refurbishment, or enhancement. That's.
I appreciate that. So we don't really need the money right away. We could wait five, 10 years to get it. No big deal.
Correct. We.
All right.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade, any thoughts? Vice Chair? Commissioner Kleepack?
I'm just curious where the 3% interest rate number came from.
So the 3% interest rate is, I guess there's a couple of different ways of looking at it. On the one hand, it's a guaranteed rate, right? We don't quite know what the interest rates will be in the future. They could be higher, they could be lower. But this was an interest rate that is guaranteed to the city and it roughly approximates kind of where, I guess, our historic trends have been with what I think the city's finance department has been seeing us receive in terms of interest in the relatively recent past. So we felt that it was just a reasonable amount to build into the modified payment schedule.
Thank you.
Chair?
Commissioner Zick.
Bill, could you, Mr. Rodriguez, could you expand on that? I mean, I know 10-year CD rates are over 5%. Could you take another run at how 3% makes sense?
Well, I don't know that I can. To be honest with you, it was a number that, you know, we looked to our finance department for some input on. We also had an outside consultant do some fiscal analysis. We relied upon the Natelson Group. And between those two parties, as well as negotiating with the applicant, 3% was a number that we all felt comfortable with as being appropriate, as being appropriate interest rate for the time deferral to receive the money.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Martinez?
Yeah, so I think when this goes over to City Council, it might be nice to have someone from the finance department there specifically for this question. It was a question I also had written down. Also questioned as to who chose the interest rate, but it sounds like it was a joint agreement between everyone. So my first question, could the year-five fees be paid before the fifth year? And would the interest then be lower since they, if they pay it before year five?
I don't think there's a problem in prepaying the fees under the agreement, but I believe it's our expectation that the full amount that we've agreed to would be remitted to the city.
Okay. I want to ask some questions about the fees. As I understand, fees are set, you know, separately by a city, like a traffic impact fee here in our charts. It says that the open space and public park impact fee was set by resolution $1.50 per square foot. What happens if those fees change? Are the fees now just set in stone in this agreement?
So, yeah, so keep in mind that this development agreement is effectively a contract between the city and the developer. And so while fees may go up or down in time, over time with the city, these fees are locked into place for the duration of the development agreement for the next 25 years until they're paid in full.
Gotcha. Okay. Moving off of the fees into the art, are there any other pending projects that may? I know we recently passed an arts master plan. Do any projects have an art requirement? And if they do, what commission would they go to, Art or us?
I can't think of any projects off the top of my head that have an art requirement currently. And I believe those, in the future, those would probably go to the Arts Commission.
Okay. And when is Building A and, I guess, the parking garage in the project phasing?
That would be done in the first phase of the project. Obviously, it's the project, it's the building that's sort of farthest back. So it makes sense to start deepest on the lot and then work out towards Sunflower. So that would be a first-phase improvement.
All right. Yeah, those are my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Any other questions before I ask? Okay. If you'd help me understand, Mr. Rodriguez, what's the, what's the logic in giving away burden hand for two in the bush, so to speak? Why wouldn't we just want to take the payment now and invest it into our infrastructure when we know years from now goods and services are going up, perhaps beyond 3%? So we know that if there's a, I don't want to sound rhetorical, but if we know that some goods and services are going to cost more than 3% for, through inflation, then why, what would be the logic of waiving that? And I know that's a little bit philosophical, so.
It is. I, you know, I think that's in part why we're before the Planning Commission is it is kind of a philosophical decision about, is this something that you would want to recommend to the planet, to the City Council? I believe that it's, it's good for the city to maybe split this into two payments instead of one. I think the applicant probably can speak to this a little bit better because I believe they're the ones who initiated the application. With us seeking a separation in time between the first payment and the second payment, obviously, it does get a little bit costly in terms, you know, from the developer in terms of paying some of these fees upfront, otherwise carrying the property, trying to finance the project and balancing sort of that return on investment so they can finance the other phases of the project so they would have a much better understanding of maybe what the fiscal impacts and rationale for making that request are. I think from our standpoint, why it makes sense for us to be open to this idea of splitting it into two installments is the idea that I don't know that we have specific projects that we're looking to fund fully with these improvements right now. And so the idea of getting something upfront is obviously appealing, but waiting just a few more years is not a bad deal from us. I, I kind of hate to put it this way, but even though we're saying five years out, five years goes by really fast in the context of development. And so it will be here before, before we know it.
Gotcha, thank you. Per the discussion on if we can go back to Slide Eight just for a second, so everyone can be looking at the same thing. Per the request to ask the Arts Commission to review the artwork, what is, what is the logic in that? And especially as it pertains to submission of that proposed artwork at the, the building permit phase versus certificate of occupancy phase? Why would we, you know, why would we delay?
So again, the thought process there is that the Arts Commission would be appointed by the council, the people who have some, you know, some degree of expertise within the arts field and maybe are better positioned to judge the value of the artwork on the building itself. In terms of the timing of it, the, in order for the applicant to satisfy the condition as it's currently written, they would have to, in a very short period of time, convene their design team, figure out what that artwork is like, get that submitted to the city, because it's my understanding that they are looking to move fairly quickly, probably within the next 12 to 18 months, on starting construction with this project. And so going through the number of iterations that they want to to figure out what the design process or what the design looks like, get that submitted to the city and have that go through our review and approval process, which may also involve several iterations. They don't want to be in a position where that, the issuance of those building permits may be held up because the artwork design has not been completely finalized yet. Tying the, tying it to the issuance of the structural building permit for that garage just seemed to make a little more sense and provide them with maybe a few more months to get through that process.
Okay. And theoretically, is there a lot of time that would be needed to have the Arts Commission deliberate and vote and then subsequently pass it back to us just for conformance? I mean, in my mind, it's just a matter of maybe a week or two is the time difference. So if you could explain the, the ask and as to why it's kind of implied that, you know, Planning Commission would somehow extend this project out to make it, you know, unreasonable when in actuality, we could theoretically vote on it following the Arts Commission's decision?
Yeah. I think, you know, like, like, excuse me, like most applications that come before the Planning Commission, there would be some type of staff report, you know, description explaining what the Arts Commission voted on and/or recommended and how and why. There may be a little bit of time to get it before the commission, perhaps, you know, within a few weeks at best. That could be probably the fastest that it could be done. But then there's, I guess, the unknown part of that is whether or not the Planning Commission would agree with the Arts Commission, if there would be other changes or maybe continuances that could possibly happen. And I think those are some of the things that the applicant, through their request, is just trying to, to remove from the process. So if they know that they can go to one commission who has been tapped by or identified by the City Council as sort of being the commission that deals with art issues in the community, it felt more natural for them to request that that be the only hearing body who would look at this. Completely up to the Planning Commission if that's something that you would want to recommend or not recommend. If you feel that it's better positioned to return to the Planning Commission, like the condition currently requires, that's, that's completely fine as well.
Okay. And you don't have to answer this, Mr. Rodriguez, but I think the thing that comes to mind just in reading this is that somehow Planning Commission is now seen as a barrier to move forward on planning items. So I, I'm just trying to make sense of this. Let's see, what else? I'll revisit some of this later on with the applicant and perhaps with staff, following the applicant's feedback. But colleagues, do you have any further questions before we move along? Okay. we move along? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I will now open the public hearing and ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to come up. And if you would, please state your name for the record, if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and if you agree to them. Yes, sir.
Hi, Commissioner. It's working?
Yep.
Evening, everybody. Brunstall here, Rose Equities and a partner at the One Metro West Community. I wanted to thank everyone today for allowing us to to present the updated application for this One Metro West and with on some procedural grounds that I think makes sense from a streamlining standpoint, makes sense from a the position where we're at right now. A lot has changed since the original approvals, and I'm really just here to answer questions. You know, we are anxious to get the development going. The idea of this started 12 years ago. I mean, it's really been quite a quite a quite a journey. We would like to move forward through this process, start the demo process and start construction in the second half of next year. What you have in front of you are three items, one of which addresses Measure K, which is the new law of the land. Then you have two items, one one dealing with the development agreement and one dealing with the art along the and the conditions of approval. As it relates to the development agreement, we are making a request to space out some of the upfront upfront costs that are associated with building A. As it stands right now, the first phase in the current development agreement would require about $10 million of of park infrastructure and and improvements to Sunflower, $6 million of the development fee exactions, and the payment of all development fees for all the projects for the upfront on the first on the first on the first building. This is a request that was that was made on the back in the original approvals in 2011, in 2021. It was not brought up in the mode, it was not finalized during that process. So we're just kind of we're revisiting that here today. As it relates to the conditions of approval and the and the arts, you know, ultimately we want to have the ability to dream, have have some time to to make something special there. And this just kind of cleaned up cleans up a little bit of language. There's a new arts committee. And then as it relates to the the timing of building A, we'd rather it makes more sense to tie it to the to the structure of building A as opposed to a grading permit or a or infrastructure permit. So I'm here to to answer questions and and looking forward to the discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stoll. Colleagues, welcome to jump in. Vice Chair?
It's all you, Chair.
Who else? Nope. All right. Yeah, let me see if I have any questions, Mr. Stoll. And thank you. Thank you for your time and for showing up this evening and for your patience with the reorganization of the I-.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. If we could turn to attachment to, these would be reference letters from the applicant. I noticed that there was a monetary discrepancy between the two letters, one saying 13 million, one saying 14 million. I just wanted to get the final verdict on that. Sorry, Mr. Stoll, I'm just looking for the attachment here. Okay.
So I think there was just some I'm not I'm I'm so you're looking at two separate letters from two separate time periods, correct?
February 14, 2024, and I believe it's December 4, 2023. So it's about a what a three month difference?
So there was just some just changes in the way that calculate it was a just math problem in the way the calculations was done. And when we sat down with with the staff, we just ironed that out.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you. Is there is there any particular reason that you believe that the Arts Committee is a better fitting commission or commission for weighing the the artistic? I mean, I guess it's kind of in the name, right?
Right.
But why why it would be better deliberated upon by them rather than us?
There was the discussion when the approvals were being done that we would get some discretionary approval from one of the bodies. And at the time, you were the planning commission was the only body. Now you have the Arts Commission. So that's why we made that change.
Like, I guess one of the things that I'm trying to to kind of rectify is, I don't really know what we're waiving because we don't have any renderings of it. So in handing the authority to the Arts Commission and foregoing our ability to weigh in on it, I don't know exactly what it's going to look like and how that conforms to the rest of our artistic standards around the city, just from a conformance standpoint. So unless the Arts Commission is prepared to uphold those provisions, I don't I don't know why we would waive our right to that, at least as it currently stands.
I mean, that I don't know what the philosophical debate between the two commissions are, but it sounds like there's some understanding that still needs to be done there, I guess.
Yeah, I guess I suppose so. All right. I think that's all for me for now. All right, colleagues. Yeah, vice? No? Okay. Nope. All right, Mr. Stoll, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to to take a seat.
Here for any other questions you have.
Great. Thank you so much. I'll now open the hearing for public comments. If you'd like to speak to this item, please approach the podium on either side. And per usual, you'll have three minutes for your public comment. At the one minute mark, you hear the chime and it'll shut off at the three minute mark. So we'll start with you, Ms. McDonald. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm requesting that you do not consider the change in approval or effective dates, as it is inappropriate for this body to be considering this change. Changing the effective date of the project would make a de facto change to Measure K to be retroactively effective. Section seven of Measure K specifically stated, "This ordinance shall take effect according to law 10 days after certification of the election at which it is adopted." That means any conditions of approval that were approved by the city council prior to the effective date for any project stayed in effect. The change to the effective date requires a vote of the people because our ordinance requires a change to the ordinance come to a vote of the people. Muni code section 13 dash 200 dot 108. Therefore, the effective date change is not in the purview of the planning commission, and this item needs to be removed from your consideration. With respect to the change in procedure for approving the landscaping and artwork, I agree with the agenda report that this is a mitigation measure that is taken directly from the environmental impact report. And unless the applicant wants to amend its EIR, then that should remain. As to the payment of the impact fees and community benefit funds, while phasing was requested, it wasn't included in the conditions of approval. If you decide to change the payment schedule now, do not agree to a 3% interest rate. Later this evening, staff will discuss floating a bond. Right now, the interest rate for bonds is 5%. Why should the city agree to a favorable 3% interest rate? You know, there's a line in Hamlet, neither a borrower nor a lender be, and it's good advice because there's a risk in both. Real estate is a very risky business. We've all seen the graffiti plastered building up in LA. The worst case scenario is that there's a recession or high inflation that causes a delay in this project. Do we want to put the city in a bad position? I never like to see the city be a lender for a developer, which is what you're doing here. You need to be looking at what is best for the city and its residents. Stick to the original agreements as negotiated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Mr. Humphrey?
Good evening, Council. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. What she said, and I'll just double that, not waste your time. But I'm a person about precedence and precedent setting. And you may or may not remember that we build a set of apartments at 1901, behind 1901 Newport, which was on Bernard Street, basically right behind it. And those units in that development agreement, as I remember, was a promise to provide 20, I think it was 21, affordable units off site, that they would build it after they finished building the project and comply with 20, I think it was 20. Guess what? The project went belly up and Costa Mesa never got those affordable unit housing of housing, never. Now, I don't know about you, but five years, maybe a short time relatively speaking, and as you pointed out, maybe it's 10 years down the road that we actually see that second payment. The point is, is that anything can happen between the start of this project and the end of the project. And keep in mind that on a phasing basis by them, they can actually have all three units, all three building units done within that five year period. And if they happen to go belly up for some reason at that point, we don't get the money unless we have an ironclad guarantee upfront that they will in fact pay that money no matter what, whether they go bankrupt, whether they drop a bomb on the place, it doesn't matter. We need to make sure we are protecting the city because they built all three units. You and I both know the the impacts will be there and will be half the impact fees shy of fixing those problems. Costa Mesa will now be in the position of having to pay for those builders doing what they want to have done at our cost, which is not much of a savings for the residents of Costa Mesa. It certainly is one of those things that we don't need to move to that. So if you're going to allow a extended five year, over half of the development fees, at least make sure that you have an ironclad guarantee that those will be paid no matter what. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Diana Denny, and I am a real estate broker and owner of my own brokerage. And I've been selling real estate for 35 years. So I want to speak to the impact of some of these proposed amended changes after the council had agreed that it would be go to a vote before the people. And Measure Y was very important for a reason. When this was launched, this idea, One Metro West, it was during the pandemic. And I recall all of us feeling as though we could not give the word out properly. The surrounding neighbors and the Mesa Verde North area where I live peacefully, they were not aware of it. And I think we were at a disadvantage with that. Now we're going back three years ago that it was approved and Measure K goes through. I I'm quite confident that there are a lot of people in that neighborhood that are completely unaware that that was going to impact them in the way that it will be with a seven story building. I with 3,000 more people being added to the area as a result of the OMW project, the traffic congestion in that region, I won't get into the streets without increasing the nearby population is it's projected to increase just harboring East Larnis intersection up to 680 more trips a day. The density of this the seven story buildings are towering 98 to 103 feet, but in actuality, upon reading the specific plan, back then anyway, it will range from 108 feet to 113. These buildings, along with the nighttime lighting on the facade, will be viewed from the entire region of the Mesa Verde North neighborhood impacting our home. This the massive change of the skyline noise, sight and light pollution will cause buyers that would be interested in purchasing those homes today to no longer be interested, as many purchasing homes worth up to 1.5 million don't want to purchase their home where there's noise, light and sight pollution. Traffic impact analysis states that OMW project net trip generation is 6,800 ADT. Now, there is significant impact, according to the analysis, to two intersections, northbound, southbound freeway ramps discussed in the April 2020 PC meeting. What I want to say is, with them wanting you to amend the facade and only provide the Arts Council, you should be a part of this. If there's light involved, there's supposed to be an agreement, no moving lights, no neon lights, nothing distracting to traffic. They want to remove the vegetation requirement that allows for more potential advertising a light on a wall. This is going to significantly impact that neighborhood pretty far back, many, many homes. This will affect property values greatly. Some buyers that would buy today would not buy. And this is my opinion based on what I know in real estate. This is a very serious decision, and you need to be a part of the decisions on the facade and what's being done to that parking structure. It should be put before the vote of the people. If this is such a great project, the people can speak and and the majority can vote it in. There shouldn't be fear to present it.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak to this item? All right, seen none. Anna, do we have anyone online or on Zoom?
Per Silla, you may provide your public comment.
Ms. Rocco, welcome.
Hello. Rose Equities is getting a sweetheart deal. After a closed session meeting with the city council a few months ago, Rose Equities has come to this commission requesting three massive changes to their agreement with the city, which will be rushed to a vote by the to the city council next week, leading me to wonder if this is all political theater and these meetings pro forma. City officials negotiated a deal behind closed doors is a Brown Act violation, I believe. The city's mandate seems to have changed focus from residents and affordable housing to acting as an agent for developers' greed, and again, opening the city to more lawsuits. Allowing Rose Equities to split their fee payments to 8 million in year one and delay the rest until year five with only 3% interest is insane. This is bad business any way you look at it. Anything can happen in five years. Why should the city agree to this? And why should we agree to rewrite Measure Y to make it retroactive for this one project? The results will be more lawsuits. Lastly, moving removing the pollution mitigating vegetation from the five story parking structure is run on so many levels. Nature is useful and beautiful along freeways arrested from concrete and billboards. I would rather Costa Mesa's calling card on this massive canvas be Tree City USA rather than questionable art that won't stand the test of time and mock the city of the arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rocco. Anyone else, Anna?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. Go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And colleagues, if you have any further questions for Mr. Stoll? All right, seen none. Mr. Stoll, do you have any closing comments? You're welcome to come up if you'd like.
Yeah, just just to reiterate a couple of things, you know, the payment of of fees for the development impact fees is something that's that's done as the buildings come up on, you know, as you as the impacts of the building happen, then you pay a park fee, you pay a traffic fee, you pay, you know, a fire a fire fee. Those are some of the fees that are out there. It's very abnormal to push all those fees up on a multi-phase project to the beginning of a phase or at the beginning of a project, on top of the fact that we're already, you know, we're we're offering up six, six, $6 million of development fee exactions. On top of that, we're doing the first new park in Costa Mesa in 30 years and and enhancements to Sunflower. There's a significant amount of upfront costs that are being put on the first building in a time when the 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 development world is is not building projects and they're being pushed to the side because of the interest rate environment. As it relates to the philosophical vision of the parking garage, we don't know what that's going to be. We just know we want to get the best minds out there and to dream on what that might be. Could that could that include vertical landscape? It might. If I did giant, a giant made it look like a giant jungle, would everyone be happy? I'm not sure that they would. It's a debate. We want to be able to be as flexible as possible. And that's what this is. That's what that's allowing to do. It's removing the constraint so we can hire the best. It's removing the constraint so we can hire the best architects, the best artists, the best landscape architects to come and dream. And that's what we're trying to do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stoll.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any further questions for staff? Yeah, Commissioner Martinez.
Sure. So first, I'd like to ask Mr. Preziosi, where the One Metro West ordinances are currently in code? And like where do they live, I'll say?
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. The One Metro West ordinances do not actually exist. One Metro West ordinance has never actually been adopted. Therefore, they are not codified. Further, the development agreement, while it's adopted by ordinance, that ordinance would not be codified even after adoption. So the ordinance that involved, the ordinances that affect the One Metro West project and enact the One Metro West projects are not in effect. So they do not exist in a code section at this point. After planning commission review, planning commission will make recommendations to the City Council. The City Council then conduct a first reading of the ordinance and then a second reading of ordinance. The reason that One Metro West ordinances were never in effect is because there was no vote of the people as required by Measure Y. However, obviously, the zoning code has changed under Measure K. So Measure Y does not apply to this particular project. Therefore, the project of One Metro West has not been approved. Now receive final approval once that is done by City Council. The ordinance will give a first reading and then a second reading.
All right. Thank you. And then my next question is about the art. Are there any other agencies or bodies that have to approve the art? It's next to a freeway. Like does Caltrans, the CTC, do they have to look at this? Or is it just us as the city?
It would be just us as the city, but there are some guidelines that Caltrans makes available that we'd make sure they're in compliance with.
All right. And you're probably not going to have this information right in front of you. So if this does go to the City Council, I think it might be nice to know what happened with the Baker Block since they have a mural also next to a freeway. So if that information could be provided to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Anyone else? Commissioner Andrade?
What are, if, I don't know if this is an opportunity to include in maybe in the proposals to go to City Council to consider the, to increasing the interest rate to what is standard now in the current amounts?
You know what, maybe we, yeah, I mean, I guess we could softly talk about it a little bit. I think, to be honest, it's outside the purview of what we're being asked because those rates are, have already kind of been set. It's certainly something that could read in the minutes, should you request. And maybe if there was something very specifically to the three bullet points that we've been asked to weigh in on that include some discussion about the impact fees, then we can open that up when we actually do come to close, closing public comment. So just theoretically, we could talk about those things. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Anyone else? All right, seen none. I will now close the public hearing. And to my colleagues, I think what we'll do is something that we've done before, which is we'll take each item separately and we can have an open discussion about those things because now it's back up here with us. We can talk freely about it. We can debate it and then ultimately work ourselves into a soft vote that could then be further crafted into a motion. So I'll go ahead and kick it off if it's okay with everyone. So outside of number one, which is the SEQUIS Section Guideline 15162, let's go down to number two, the resolution. First bullet point, introducing the first reading of an ordinance amending the development agreement regarding the timing of payment for impact fees and community benefit funds. I'll go ahead and throw it out there that this, I know it might seem a little bit confusing as to why we wouldn't get the money upfront. I think I have some concerns about that myself, if you share in that sentiment. I would personally rather have the money now and be able to commit those funds to projects that we know are coming up. But I also think that it's not a totally unreasonable request, particularly if our finance department has weighed out the math and said, you know what, we could take that 3% and it would yield approximately what it would be if we put that into an account. That's the best of my understanding. I think it just kind of delays the payment. I don't, it's not a, it's not a hill that I'm going to die on. And I think it's a fairly reasonable request that we move forward on. But I'm happy to hear your thoughts. Commissioner Zick, I see your light on.
I understand your perspective on that. I don't plan to die on any hill either. If this was not a development agreement, the fees involved in this project would come straight out of our code. They wouldn't have a choice. There'd be no alternative. To use the term exaction, I think would be completely appropriate in that circumstance because those fees would be exacted from a developer like we do on any project. The fact that there's a development agreement, I don't think that's a fair term to be using because this is a negotiation. People have the ability to agree or not to fees. I think in this realm of negotiation and what is sometimes referred to as a partnership with a developer, and I think it's an appropriate term, there needs to be or should be a good faith component to that negotiation. There was reference earlier in the meeting that a development agreement is a contract. It is a contract. I think there's an expectation when there's a contract that both parties meet the obligations that they've agreed to in the contract. And what was agreed to was to pay those fees upfront. That's what was agreed to. Are there reasons to change it? Are there good reasons to change it? Maybe. I don't see those good reasons. To say, for example, and not to be critical of this point, but we wouldn't know what to do with that money if we got it today. The next item on our agenda is our five-year capital improvement plan. There are millions and millions and millions of dollars of projects in this five-year plan. Five years goes by fast. I've heard that already tonight a couple of times. Millions and millions and millions of dollars, line by line, of projects. I think we have a pretty darn good idea what we could do today with an additional $10 million. 3% interest, you already heard my point about that. You know, if we treated this like we treated our own personal money, we'd probably be bankrupt. If you've got millions of dollars, you want to loan me at 3%, I'll take that deal today. Because I'll just turn in the treasuries, I'll make 5% all day long. It's so easy. I can't believe that we would agree to something like that with our money. We're making a recommendation to City Council. It's not our final decision. I doubt that they're sitting there listening, waiting for what I think we ought to do. I think Priscilla was correct. At least I'm aware, the title of this project was a title in council closed session agendas. Don't know what the subject was, don't know what the discussion was. It's entirely possible that all these deal points have been agreed to in principle. That's not necessarily bad. I don't necessarily object to that. I don't even necessarily object to it being done in closed session if, in fact, that was the case. Because it would be appropriate then to bring it to Planning Commission and say, let's put some sunlight on this. Let's see what the public thinks about this. And then, Planning Commission, you tell us what you think. I think that aspect of it is appropriate. Well, what I think is stick to the deal, pay the money upfront like you should. This project was approved back in 2021. I think there has been plenty of time, plenty of time to say, wait a minute, I've got buyer's remorse on the deal that I signed. I think there's been plenty of time to design the art rendering for the parking structure that is going to be a major eyesore to the city. A forever eyesore.
Well, we'll get to that in our next few points.
Yeah, I'm setting a marker in the ground for that right now. Plenty of time. So to this one, no, I don't think we should amend the timing of these fees whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade, do you have any thoughts?
None other than, none other than what I shared already.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Kleepack, thoughts?
So I think this is a fantastic project and I am an impacted resident of Mesa Verde. But that said, I agree that the city should not be the financier offering an interest rate that can be found nowhere out in the market. I agree that I think we should stick to the original settlement.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Kleepack. Commissioner Martinez?
Yeah, I had the same questions about the interest rate. And I do wish that we had someone from the finance department here to answer those questions. And I think I would appreciate that if we ever have an item like this again. I also wanted to just make a technical point that in our Table 2 on Page 5 of the staff report, we have, you know, the original amount is 16 and 1/2 roughly million. And then we have a total there that's expressed in both 2020, well, I'll just say year one is 2024, in 2024 and in 2029 dollars combined. And you're combining like four years of inflation with year zero inflation. So I just wanted to make the point that the total, if we're going to use year five, in year five dollars, the total would be 19,166,000. And if we just keep it at year one with no interest rate, we're going to be at 16 and 1/2 million. Just wanted to say that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Do you have any particular thoughts on whether to approve the request for the impact fees from the developer or to maintain the original agreement? Just to kind of take a soft, soft idea of where everyone's at in hopes of crafting a motion later on.
I would be okay with splitting it, mostly because I see in our next item, we have a lot of things under year five and year future. And with a large amount of money coming in in year five, then we might possibly have some funding for those future projects that'll come before this body five years from now. So I think that's quite convenient.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks for your opinion. Vice Chair?
All right. I think there's two questions here. It's whether the applicant can be able to split the payment. That's one. And then two, whether 3% is the right number. And so for the second one, I don't think the planning commission, this is above our pay grade. I think, I'm not going to opine there. I hear everybody saying that that seems low. Treasury's paying 5%. Inflation's higher than that. So all that, the minutes reflect me squirming on that and defer it to the City Council and our finance department. But in terms of whether we can let them defer the payment, I think absolutely so. This is a project that the city's been excited about. It's been going on for a long time. And I think it's a really hard time for developers to develop right now with interest rates and cost of construction and a lot of things. And anything we could do to get ourselves out of the way so that they can build because we're trying to get more housing and trying to urbanize and trying to urbanize well, then absolutely let them split the payment and make it a little easier on them.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Maybe I'll clean things up here in the end unless anyone else wants to jump in later on. I know it's interesting in my retirement accounts, I'm already making close to 4% on my investments. So 3% just, you know, mathematically seems low compared to some other accounts that you could be putting it into. But like the Vice Chair mentioned, this, in my opinion, is above our pay grade. This is something that happens outside of us. This has nothing to do, like the rate, interest rate, has nothing to do with planning decisions. It's not fact. It's not finding. It doesn't have to do with the cultural landscape and what we're building into the built environment. So I'll go ahead and say that the percentage interest rate is beyond us. That's where I fall. I see that after calculating some things, we would be at a potential split vote. If I, if I went into the no direction, we'd be three and three. So I think to move things along, I'm going to, I'm going to consider that as we, as we move on to the second point. In saying that, I think it's possible to allow the developer this five-year extension on payment, seeing as how it's beyond us to make that particular decision. So that's, that alone puts us at a 4-2 on that point. We'll go ahead and move on to the second bullet point, which is to introduce for first reading an ordinance clarifying the project's effective approval date contained in development agreement 20-02, rezone 20-01, and specific plan 20-01. Yes, give a first reading is what I think to City Council for the approval date. Thoughts?
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Zick?
Well, it's almost comical to me. It's comical to me because it's a revisionist history. It's obviously clear when this project was approved. Revising the date serves only one purpose. And it's to get this project out from under Measure Y, which was in full effect when this was approved, and have it not be subject to Measure Y and have it be only subject to Measure K. I mean, it's the only reason to do this, changing the date. It's revisionist history. I remember quite clearly on two occasions asking a very specific question of the applicant. Will your project be subject to Measure Y? And the answer I got was also very clear, very specific, somewhat unambiguous. The answer was, we will follow the law. Okay? Well, the law at that time was Measure Y. So was it the whole truth, we'll follow the law? Or was a more fulsome answer, well, we really don't like Measure Y. We have no intention of putting this on the ballot. We already have things in work to obviate Measure Y and supplant it with Measure K. So we're just going to bide our time, not move forward with this project. We're going to change the law. We're not going to comply with the law. We're going to change the law. That's the full answer. And so all this does is dot the i and cross the t of that plan. Now, the city has been excited about this project. I just heard that. Well, if the city is so darned excited about it, then put it on the ballot like it should have been. Let's find out how excited they are. And if they are, it'll be approved, it'll get built. Were that excited about it? Great. Let's not be afraid to follow the law. This is an insult. This is an insult. I'm not trying to revise or revisit the elements of this project. It's been designed, it's been on the board for three years, more than that 15 or however long that that comment was. Change the date so it's no longer subject to Measure Y? That's insulting to me. Council's probably going to, they're just waiting for this to get to them. John, will you stop talking so it can get to us that much sooner? Yeah, probably.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade, thoughts?
No comments.
No comments. Commissioner Klepak? You want to go after Commissioner Martinez? Commissioner Martinez?
Yeah, okay, let me, let me ask a question. Let's, let's have a hypothetical where we have a project and we, let's use maybe a real example. We're looking at our residential minimum parking requirements right now through a study. Okay? And this project is required to have 500 parking spaces. Okay? And we have the development agreement and we say, you are required to have 500 parking spaces. Okay? We later on change minimum parking requirements so that they're, I don't know, we change them so that they're lower. Now the developer is only required to have 300 parking spaces. Okay? Can they then come back to us and say, hey, we'd like to change the number of parking spaces to reflect this new law that you just passed? So we only have to have 300 parking spaces and not the 500 that were required previously?
I mean, the short answer is yes, they could ask.
They could ask?
Correct.
Okay. And would we be allowed to approve that?
Would you be allowed to approve a reduction in parking when there was a development agreement that already said that they would have to come up with a certain amount of parking spaces? Or just, or just in a project perspective, just they've got approved for a project and the ordinance changed? I don't recall.
Can we change that ordinance, can we change that development agreement after the fact based on a new law that is passed?
Sure.
Okay. So.
Absolutely.
So now I'm thinking I'm fine with changing it.
Okay. Commissioner Klepak, or do you want to go after the Vice Chair? Vice Chair, Toller.
Sure. I think Commissioner Martinez made a clean, simple analogy. And that's kind of the way I was thinking about it too. And I think, you know, the vote of the people, people voted on Measure Y. But then they all voted on Measure K specifically to remove what they saw as a barrier to the production of housing. When they went to the booth, they had a Measure K map in their hand. The cyan painted on parts of the city, including this site. So it's really a question for the city attorney. And if they're okay with it, it's a technical question, right? It's not, do I think this project should go forward? Or it should be thrown to a vote or not? It's, it's a technical question. But I agree with the logic presented in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Klepak?
I agree with the logic that was presented. I agree that the date should be changed.
Okay. I'll say, just to kind of clean things up here in the end. For anyone who supported Measure Y, I understand. I, you know what, I was living back east when all, everything was going on and the whole impetus for why Measure Y came to be. I was going to school always with the intention of coming back to Costa Mesa, but I certainly heard about it from my parents and family. And it was, it was rough back then. So I can understand why some people would want to keep intact that whole, a development of a particular size with certain caveats has to be put on the ballot. And what could be more democratic than having voters vote on everything that we do? Particularly housing, right? That's about, just about as democratic as it gets. In this case, the sad fact is that a lack of development has led to a lot of the ills in our community, which was the reason why Measure K was put on the ballot. Now, I know some people might think that there were, you know, special interests. There were, you know, people who were hoping for a particular outcome. Certainly, certainly. But at the same time, when the voters, like the Vice Chair mentioned, had the map in their hand to say, we want to redevelop commercial corridors and we want to upzone and we want the production of housing, yes, it passed with a razor-thin margin. It couldn't have been any closer, to be honest.
And that was after cured votes were counted.
Yeah, all legally.
Oh, yeah.
Cured, yeah. Curing. So I get it. And so, and I understand the reservations that some people have about like, let's, let's keep the developer to the original agreement. And this seems like a sidestep, you know, changing the language to reflect Measure K. But as I understand it, like, this is the new law. This is what we follow because of this razor-thin passage of Measure K. So whether we like it or not, we are beholden to it. Now, I think you could argue one way or the other, but one of the reasons why it's in front of us is just because of form. It has to come in front of us. Now, whether we'd have the right to deny it based on the information we've been given, I'm not sure we have enough information to deny it, at least for the reasons that I've been provided. So whether I like it or not, I feel like it's my duty to actually support this particular component of what staff is asking of us. So I'll be on the yes side of this. To the last and final bullet, approving modifications to City Council Resolution 2021-55, amending certain conditions of approval regarding the artwork of Building A along the I-405 freeway. Of all the things that I think we have the most authority to do, it would be this. I am not comfortable letting go of our ability to perform oversight on what is going to be proposed along the freeway. I don't, I don't think it's because we're a bunch of stick in the muds and we want to, you know, curtail whatever the Arts Commission wants to do. I think there's a lot of highly creative, colorful people up here who can look at art in a lot of different ways. So I think we could do a fine job. And I would like to keep Condition 9 intact, I believe. I'd have to look back at it, but to, if anything, allow the Arts Commission to have that first pass on what's proposed and then encourage staff and City Council to really support this concept of rolling it over to us very quickly so that we can look for conformance and also weigh in. Because we are members of the public as well, we just happen to be decision makers. So with that said, Commissioner Zick, thoughts?
Yeah, so the three items, this is one I feel least strongly about. But the logic for proposing this to me is, again, it's almost silly to me to say, well, we haven't, you know, we don't want to be rushed. You know, we haven't had time. This thing was approved three years ago. Three years ago. You haven't had time? What have you been doing? You certainly haven't been constructing. You need more time? I mean, good grief, let's be serious. I'm not, I wasn't the one behind this condition of approval when this was in front of us prior to the council approval. I'm not, I'm not married to the idea of landscaping on the face of the seven-story parking structure that is going to be facing the freeway and the homes in Mesa North for the rest of our lives. I'm not married to that idea. The art component of this, and you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder and ask 20 people, you get 21 opinions. I understand all that. But there is a land use component to that review that I think is within the purview of the Planning Commission. Lighting, softening of edges, the articulation of the structure. I mean, these are, these are things that are part of the design review. It is every bit in the realm of the Planning Commission. To say, oh, no, this, let's, while I'm, while I'm shifting around payments and cutting interest rates and changing dates to make this thing bypass Measure Y, which it should have been subject to. Let me throw in this one too, because we've determined we can, I don't know, save money? I mean, what would be the reason for this? It almost doesn't even make sense. Why would you come forward and say, oh, I don't want the Planning Commission to? We might do plants, we might do landscaping, but maybe we wouldn't want to. I don't know. I don't know what the hidden agenda is behind this request. But jeepers creepers, you agreed to the deal. Isn't that the whole idea of a development agreement contract? To Commissioner Martinez's point, yeah, after a development agreement is signed, we can agree to some lesser condition, less stringent condition. It happens all the time. And if it's in our favor, we should agree to it. None of these are in our favor. Oh, except maybe we're very excited about the project. But we're afraid that the community might not be as excited.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade?
I think I'm okay with having the Arts Committee or Commission take a review of what's being proposed and including an opportunity for planning to very efficiently take a look at it. I think it's important to maintain, you know, the green space expectations as much as possible. You know, we want to keep it broad so that artists can create, but maybe incorporating language with, highly recommend some vertical landscaping. Because again, allowing for an opportunity to make the green city that we're targeting to be.
All right, thank you. Very thoughtful responses. Commissioner Andrade? Commissioner Klepak?
I'm personally okay with this and letting the Arts Commission do what the Arts Commission is there to do. I don't see a lot of harm in having it come back through Planning Commission because it does have impacts on lighting. And, you know, I do like the thought of vegetation that's a sound break and the environmental benefits of, you know, being along a freeway and things like that. But I would be okay with the Arts Committee or Commission taking responsibility for that piece.
Solely or in addition to planning, if you had to pick a side?
I would be okay with them solely. Just because if it has to go through them and then go through us, then it kind of negates their authority to an extent.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner Klepak. Commissioner Martinez?
Yeah, I think no matter which way we go on this, we should be recommending changes because it references the Cultural Arts Committee, which no longer exists. So if we can just make sure that that's noted in our recommendation. Let's see. One of their things is removing which shall incorporate vertical landscaping. And I think I agree with Commissioner Andrade. If we could change that language to like, highly encourage or like, not require, I would be in support of that. And then for Arts Commission, I don't know, I was not appointed to make arts decisions. I was appointed to this body. So I prefer that it just stays at the Arts Commission level. But I'm not going to, you know, make my decision based on this part of the motion.
Okay. All right, thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Vice Chair, thoughts, particularly as it relates to PC involvement?
I think that we have really smart people on the Arts Commission and that this is a cool project for them. And it's right up their alley. And I can't imagine me up here nitpicking saying, oh, you put a brunette up, can you make her a red? I mean, I mean, let's streamline this, let them do something cool, let them get approval by the new Arts Commission, give them a cool project to review. And I don't, I don't need to. I mean, is there anything more dismal than an urban freeway? Right? Like, if it looks like Rainforest Cafe up there, it's not going to improve anybody's day. It's going to be cool, it'll be recognizable, kind of like Baker Block. But let them do something cool, Arts Commission's got it. I'm not going to, I don't think that's anything for, at least, yeah. Visibility from a 10-lane urban highway is not, that's not what I'm trying to do up here. I think we need to be doing up here.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. I'll go ahead and mention that I'm not worried necessarily about the kind of art that is depicted. I mean, with some caveats, of course. But if anything, it's the matter of vegetation that I'd like to keep intact. It's the lighting, particularly as it relates to, ironically, how much light shines across 15 lanes of freeway on the 405, which is to say a very far distance. But nonetheless, a potential impact that is inherently tied to land use. Now, do I think that we have smart colleagues on the Arts Commission? Absolutely. Chair Aschendorf is not only a wonderful person, but she's also, for those of us who live in Mesa Verde, she's one of our neighbors too. And super involved in this community. So it's not to say that I don't trust their abilities as individuals or as a commission. I think if anything, it's just to, to think through some of the more commonplace planning-type considerations with the idea that, yes, we give the Arts Commission a pretty wide berth to consider what's going to be done. But what I don't want to have happen, and I don't want to be surprised with this, and I'm not saying that it will, but I don't know exactly what I'm waving, if it's going to be something like a triangle square LED sign type thing. That's what I end up waving and then I find out a couple of years later. I don't want that to happen. Yes. I know there's conditions in there.
Yeah, Condition Number 66 points to the regulations in the specific plan that aren't being, those are still intact. Okay. For the public's knowledge too, because somebody mentioned that risk.
Yeah. So I appreciate you pointing that out. But if anything, I would say, yeah, absolutely, to change the language to reflect the Arts Commission instead of the Cultural Arts Committee, to allow Arts Commission to move forward with the initial review and recommendation that very quickly gets turned over to us just for conformance. And then we, we move it through. And I don't think there's going to be a lot of lag time in that. Hopefully, it comes to us sooner than later. So I've, I've hit the button to make a motion. And we'll see where this goes based off of our discussion. And this is guided by the majority vote. So vote how you will, whatever.
Can I, before?
Yeah.
Real quick. So there were, that last thing we went through was really a two-part, right? It was, it was whether, who the, who the approving body would be, but also the timing of it before building permit issuance or certificate of occupancy. And I don't know if we fleshed out that latter point.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, Vice Chair. I'm not tied to either way. I think if it's, if it's at the occupancy phase and they want more time to flesh it out, okay. Ideally, it would be at the building phase. But, and I'm, you know, I would hope that you could get art done, you know, at that point. Commissioner Zick, you have thoughts?
So can you imagine the building's built, inspections have been done, CFO is ready to be issued, except this condition hasn't been met? So we're going to hold up a CFO because we don't have an art design plan? Can you imagine? because we don't have an art design plan. Can you imagine us ever doing that? Never in a million years. So what is the leverage? Get the plan up front. That's the leverage.
I would, if, so on bottom of page seven in the staff report, it says staff doesn't recommend modifying that part, the timing of it, as it's a mitigation measure and the language is taken directly from the final EIR. Can you expound on that, how that would maybe throw a wrench in things technically? Mr. Rodriguez?
Sure. So I think in the staff report on page seven, we have two paragraphs that kind of speak to this issue. So we, we were supportive of replacing the cultural arts committee with the arts commission. But in terms of the timing, the applicant's request was to change it to prior to certificate of occupancy. We were not supportive of that. We were supportive of the first structural building permit, which was a nuance to change, I think, from the language in the, the original condition, which talked about first building permit. We're making the first structural building permit. So.
So is that meeting them in the middle? That gives them a little more time, but not as much time as at the end of the road?
Correct. Yeah. It gives them a little, a little more time. Yes.
All right. Thanks for bringing that up, Vice Chair. All good. So here's, here's my motion. And if you think of any friendly amendments to help clean this up even more, I'm happy to hear it. Recommend fine pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section 15162, and the proposed amendments are in substantial conformance with the final environmental impact report EIR for the One Metro West Project State Clearinghouse Number 2019050014, including a mitigation monitoring program and statement of overriding considerations, which was certified by the city council on July 20th, 2021, and that no further environmental review under SEQA is required and adopt resolution, a resolution 2024-XX, recommending that the city council, number one, introduce for first reading an ordinance amending development agreement DA-20-02 regarding the timing of payment for the impact fees and community benefit funds. With the discussion that we had earlier reflected in more detail in the minutes that go on to city council about the percentage. And two, to introduce for first reading and ordinance clarifying the project's effective approval date contained in the development agreement 20-02, rezone 20-01, and specific plan 20-01. And finally, approve the modifications to the city council's resolution 2021-55, amending certain conditions of approval regarding the artwork on building A along the I-405 freeway. With additional notation or condition placed on the arts committee. Recommending to planning commission. The final, and will, will be making a recommendation to city council after arts commission. To also update the language in this section to say arts commission versus cultural arts committee. And that the developer keep to the first standard building or struc, the first structural building permit as far as timing of when, when that artwork needs to come through. Is there a second? Seconded by Martinez. I have, I'll say that what we discussed for the last, I don't know, hour, two hours, I haven't been keeping track. To me, this, the, the way that we talk in some of the more complicated items like this, I'm sure some would argue it's not complicated. But for some of the more weighty type items that we hear, I do very much enjoy having these discussions with you and coming to terms on compromise. I think that like any, anything that requires multiple decisions within one motion, nobody gets everything that they want. But I think that this is a good compromise to make a recommendation to city council, who will no doubt be weighing in on this as well. So I think as far as we're concerned, we did our due diligence, we weighed things out, and I'm proud to send something along to them. Commissioner Martinez?
Yeah, I'm in support of the motion. I think we, I mean, we already discussed this at length. I just wanted to ask, because right now you just mentioned the art going to arts commission, then to us, and then, did you say city council? Is that what was originally the plan, or was it supposed to end with us?
Originally, it would have ended with the planning commission.
Okay. No, that's, that's good to know, Mr. Rodriguez. It was my assumption that city council may just want to pull it up anyways. But yeah, if it ends with us, then we become the final decision on, on that.
So, so with your motion, is it going to city council?
No, it is not.
Okay, cool. Either way, you know, I, I already said, I, I don't know if I'm going to be an expert on art. And I would hope that if it comes to us, it comes in consent, just so that we can, you know, just check, make sure it's nothing egregious land use wise. Otherwise, I've already said my thoughts at length during this meeting. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Anyone else? Vice Chair?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So condition of approval number nine, did the landscaping thing get struck?
No.
We're, we're, we're deciding, we're, okay. So the applicant requested that we remove that requirement, but we're saying, no, you have to do, you have to incorporate landscaping. That's going to stay?
If you have a, a particular request, I'm open to hearing it. I, I think not, not to overtalk it before you, you discuss it yourself, but I think that landscaping is of a greater benefit than not.
Okay. Okay. No, I was just, I missed whether we, okay.
Is there a question on that? Why does landscaping have to go to an arts commission then?
It's a good question. It doesn't. I think that's part of the logic of maintaining it, is that if we did not insist on it, then it becomes purely art rather than actually having vegetation along the corridor there.
But didn't you just say you want it to stay landscaping?
Stay landscaping.
Regardless?
Regardless. No, with art.
Okay.
Yeah. In conjunction with. I think that's the intent. Anyone else? Commissioner Andrade, thoughts?
I'm good with it as long as it, yeah, maintains that landscaping in it.
Okay. Commissioner Zick, any thoughts?
As long as you're going to pull that out of me. We could make a recommendation against all these things. And council's going to do what they think they should do.
Duly noted. Thank you. Vice Chair?
Yeah, if I was the final, if this was the final decision on all this, I'd be squirming more and insisting more. But I don't think there's support for some of the changes I'd like. I don't think we, we need to require that specifically landscaping be included. I'd like to give them more time to do a, do a, some sort of art contest that they have in mind. I think that's fine. Generally, again, I, I want to do everything that we can to ensure that this is designed in excellence, but also get ourselves out of the way. So the city can just grow well. Anyway, I'm in support of the motion though.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. Unless anyone else has any further thoughts, move it along. Anna, let's call the question.
That motion carries 5-1 with Commissioner Zick voting no.
All right. Thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the city council within seven days. Thank you. All right. Where do we go from here? Huh? Bedtime. This brings us to old business, new business, and I see neither. But we do have, oh, I'm sorry, we do have one new business item tonight. And Anna, if you please read the title?
New business item number one, review, review of the one-year fiscal year 2024-2025 and five-year fiscal year 2024-2025 to fiscal year 2028-2029, capital improvement program for consistency with the Costa Mesa 2015-2035 general plan.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll now turn it over to our Mr. Yang to present the item. Mr. Yang?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the planning commission. My name is Sung Yang, your city engineer. So I'll, I have the privilege tonight to be presenting our presentation with respect to the general plan conformity and consistency for our upcoming capital improvement programs for the single year fiscal year 2425 and also for five years 2425 through 28 through 29. Given, given this late hour, I'll try to be as expeditious as possible throughout the presentation without trying to sacrifice too much detail. So off we go. I guess this is probably the, the time where I probably talk the most this year before.
We always enjoy hearing from you, Mr. Yang.
All right. Thank you. So the capital improvement program, or CIP for short, is a fiscal planning and budget activity tool and is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, or otherwise known as SEQA. The, the recommendation is to approve the general plan conformity resolution for the city's one-year, which is fiscal year 2425, and also for, for the five-year, as you see there, for the capital improvement programs. So let's go briefly about the CIP process. So the CIP budget overview, it's, the CIPs are financed from multiple funding sources, of which are federal, state, county, and local levels. Funding sources can be different restrictions regarding eligibility, the record retention schedules, and reporting as well. We often involve multiple levels of government oversight, coordination, approval, and ultimately auditing. And it requires extensive coordination from all city departments, including the city attorney's office and other related granters. So in order to qualify as a CIP project, the minimum monetary threshold is $30,000. So for CIP projects overview, it's by definition, it's a multi-year program. Almost none of our projects are completed within a year. It demonstrates the next round of project priorities. And we have projects undergoing seven different distinct phases over multiple years, as you can see there in the bulleted list below. So we are an award-winning department, the public works department, as you can see in the slide before you with all the multiple awards that we award, where, that we have won over the years. And I'm proud to say that our department has won two more awards with Orange County ASCE for the Placentia Avenue Improvement Project, as well as our traffic signal installation at Wallace and 19th, and also the hawk signals that were installed at Lyons Park and Wilson Park. So for the one-year 2425 proposed CIP projects, we'll get into that. So a little bit of contextual background. So the fiscal year 2425 CIP budget, it meets the 5% capital asset needs or CAN ordinance, that's, which is a requirement. And projects are identified based on the following, the city council priorities, the goals, and also the objectives, also department requests, and citywide infrastructure facility needs assessments, et cetera, and commissions committee, and also from our community feedback as well. So what's new in 2425? So future bond financing options are one of the things that we're looking at for projects such as the generator replacements, CD Hall, PD Communications, and for the senior center as well. So fire station number two reconstruction, and also fire station number four living quarters reconstruction are, are the projects, enumerated projects that we're talking about. Also cannabis-related traffic impact fees, TIF fund, will allow for future bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure improvement projects as well. I won't go through this entire list, but you can see before you some of the primary funding sources for fiscal 2425. And, and those are the enumerated numbers that you see before you. This is hard to see, but you have it in your handout. This is the attachment one. This is the, the one-year CIP for upcoming fiscal year 2425. And a little bit of quick facts. So 47 projects are being recommended. We're talking about close to nearly $48 million worth of total CIPs. And for future bond and financing, we're looking at close to $20 million. So here are some of the projects. So for upcoming fiscal year 2425, this is our annual citywide street and also alley improvements. It's a program to rehabilitate our streets in accordance to the payment management system index to, to improve, to meet city council goals to reach and also maintain an average payment condition index, or PCI of 85. Our citywide rehabilitation project, we're also embarking on, on designing new alleys and also renewing that project. And this includes all improvements within all council districts, for the street improvements and also the alleys. Here's a list. It's a, it's a large list of all the streets and alleys that we are planning on doing in the upcoming fiscal year. So it's a very ambitious list. As you can see, we have an ambitious program in improving our infrastructure, street and alley infrastructure. We'll go into a little bit of the facility needs, our facilities assessment study as well. So Costa Mesa owns about like 23 facilities, and I won't read off everything there, but you can see from that list of all the facilities that the city has. Our new deputy public works director will be in charge of, of going over the, the facility needs assessment study. And he will be in charge and overseeing that for, for our city. The existing emergency community facility, it serves as a vital communication link to public responders. So for this project, the current facility requires several improvements, such as expanded locker rooms and added shower areas, and also the reconfiguration of expansion and office spaces. We're looking also some senior center improvements. It's in need of certain aesthetic improvements, like new paint, for example, flooring, and better restrooms. HVAC equipment is, needs to be spruced up. So it's approaching its life expectancy. Also, the roof is being planned to be repaired. Shows size of a lot of wear and tear and age throughout the years. And also we're talking about a new, installing a new generator, generator for, for this senior center facility. Terms of active transportation, we're looking at Adams Avenue Bicycle Facility Project, Fairview to Harbor. We received close to $1.8 million in federal grants. We're implementing class two bike lanes and class four cycle tracks. We're looking at median modifications, slurry ceiling, slurry sealing the pavement, and intersection and traffic cell modifications at the intersection of Fairview and Adams. We're looking at improving pedestrian bicycle mobility and access throughout the area. So let's look at Fairview Road Improvement. The limits are from Fair to Adams. We're looking at a federal grant of close to $2 million over the next two fiscal years. We're seeking to improve bicycle facilities, green bicycle and conflict zone striping as well, high visibility pedestrian crossings, and also various pedestrian upgrades and transit improvements. We're also looking to improve pedestrian bicycle mobility and access to the area. And this guy, the design will be in fiscal year 2425, and construction phase will be in the future fiscal year. So signal modernization for systemic multimodal safety improvements. Here's another great project, which is also related to active transportation. Close to $4 million grant award from the Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program, or Hzip for short, includes implementing LPIs, or leading pedestrian intervals at 49 intersections, countdown pedestrian signal heads at 43 intersections, and installing new retro reflective border backplates, and also enhancing visibility and compliance. We're also looking at installing battery backup systems out along the major intersections, and also installing emergency vehicle preemption devices at three, 30 intersections to complete the network for our city's emergency services. Tree planting and young tree program. So we're recognized 18 years of being a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. In order to maintain that, that, that honorable designation, we want to improve the tree canopy area, the city that are deficient, and also continue to implement the tree planting and young tree care program as proposed. So we're proposing funding will enable So we're proposing funding will enable planting and care for up to 250 new trees throughout the city. So let's look at some additional information. So five-year CIP for 2425 through 28 through 29. So the five-year plan includes projects deferred, and those projects in upcoming fiscal years. You have it in your packet, attachment number three, that includes the five-year CIP. The five-year plan, we update it annually with respect to goals and priorities as dictated by the city council. We get input from commissions such as the Planning Commission, for example, committees, community, and also through best practices over the years. So the projects listed from years two to five and future for our planning purposes, and this is the plan for future grant opportunities as well. So we're nearing the end of this presentation, so you can see the schedule of our presentation of our CIP projects to the various commissions and committees. So the ones in red, we've completed. And today is May 13th, and we're presenting this to you, the Planning Commission. And the rest of the dates are the budget and operating budget CIP presentations to the city council. So that comes to the conclusion of our presentation of our CIP programs and its conformity to the general plan. Our team is open to answering any questions or other inquiries from the Planning Commission. I have with me Mr. Seth Raman, who is our Public Works Director. In addition, in the audience, we have Mr. Rob Ryan, who is our Maintenance Services Manager, and Ms. Jennifer Rosales, our Transportation Services Manager as well. So thank you. I defer back to the chair.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Yang. That was a great presentation. Commissioners, do you have any high-level comments or questions for staff? I'm going to go ahead and skip comments and questions because I had the pleasure of chatting with Mr. Yang earlier today, so. Questions, Commissioner Martinez.
Yes, all right. So could we go to slide number 16? Yeah, I think this is citywide street improvements, maybe alley improvements in attachment one. Can I just get a confirmation that, you know, active, whenever part of the active transportation plan, which is now part of our general plan, one of those streets is one of these streets that we will be incorporating active transport elements into the rehabilitation of the streets?
Mr. Chairman, I'll answer that. So Commissioner Martinez, glad you're at that stage right now. Yeah, any of the projects that are in that transportation plan, we'll make every attempt to make sure that they are part of the, part of the plan. The only reason why some streets may not get it is if we have to go through an extensive public outreach process if we are removing parking and stuff like that. But if it's something that we can implement, like we did on El Camino Real or on Baker, other places, we will definitely include that.
Yeah, looking at this list, I was specifically looking at Baker, I believe, is the one which might be on the active transportation plan. And then the 35th project that's listed in our attachment two is the RMRA projects on Harbor and a couple of other streets, and I wanted to ask the same question. If it's, you know, active transportation included, you know, in those projects as well.
So Harbor Boulevard, for example, is not on the active transportation plan. So while we make every attempt to look at other things, such as sidewalks and other opportunities to widen sidewalks, we'll definitely consider those. And if, you know, on some streets, if we can narrow lanes and if we are able to get a bike lane, we'll definitely go through that process too, to look at it. But if we are not able to gain a lane by narrowing, let's say, to 10 and a half foot lanes, then we might, we might, we might leave the way they are at this point.
Yeah, on Harbor, I think I might be even more interested than in active transport lanes and transit lanes. Would that be feasible under RMRA?
So what do you mean by transit lanes?
A transit-only lane, a bus lane.
Okay, so we will not be able to do that because it won't be compliant with Measure M at that point, with our, not Measure M, with our master plan of highways.
It actually would be compliant under an attachment to the master plan of arterial highways where they allow for transit lanes on Harbor Boulevard and other roads that are that designation. So I think it's something worth looking into, since it is specifically allowed, might as well look into it. Which brings me to slide 22, please. Since I'm talking about transit, looks like we're looking at emergency vehicle preemption devices. And I wanted to ask if there's been any conversation with OCTA about transit vehicle preemption, or at least communication between the transit vehicle and the signal to speed up transit?
So that particular discussion is an ongoing discussion with OCTA. So we don't have any at this point, and down the road, if there are opportunities for those, we'll consider them.
Great. Let's see. Project number 36 in attachment one is the Placentia Stormwater Trash Collector. We're currently undergoing a stormwater master plan, right? Is this being factored into that? And should we wait, or why are we going through this project right now?
So Commissioner Martinez, thank you for the question. So for the Placentia Stormwater Trash Project, that is being funded by our OCTP, OCTA Environmental Cleanup Program, ECP, Tier One. So therefore, there is certain funding deadlines, so we can't really defer it too much in terms of. So that's one of the reasons why it's programmed in the one-year CIP, as you see there. So we're also working in conjunction with the Storm Resistor Master Plan, but that's the reason why it's programmed for this.
Great.
And it is consistent with the plan anyways.
All right, cool. Now for questions on the five-year. Just overall, generally, why do you put some projects in year two versus year three versus year four? What determines what column these projects go under?
So the many projects that are on year two are projects that were considered this year, and we could not fund it this, not, sorry, when I say this year, that were considered for 2425, but due to lack of funding, we moved it to the next year. Examples are the playground improvements at Marina View Park, as well as Harper Park. We had, we were considering that as part of funding into the next fiscal year, but due to lack of funding, those were moved to the next year. So that's the reason why you see some of those projects there. Otherwise, these were projects that were, a lot of them were, were kind of programmed based on our preliminary understanding from various plans. When we did active transportation plans, we put all the projects that were in the active transportation plan in various fiscal years, keeping in mind that we cannot load everything in one year, so we spread them apart. And when we get funding opportunities, we move projects around based on how we get the funding. Many projects that we know we are not going to implement are moved to the future fiscal year because we want to still keep them because they're part of some plan. They're in our general plan, or they're in our, you know, in our current open space master plan. So you still see those projects there, but in the future year, which means they may never happen, but we have to keep them in some list to be consistent with our plans.
On that note, I am going to read out a policy in our general plan. Policy OSR, so Open Space and Recreation Element 1.10, which says, I don't have the exact language, but the gist of it says that we're going to pursue additional community garden lots and spaces to meet demand. I was listening to the PAX Commission meeting, and I think they said that there is a two-year waitlist on community garden lots. And one of our policies is to pursue additional lots, but we don't have it as even a future year project. So I think to be in compliance with that policy, we should add something at least under that column. Am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely add a project to that. I mean, it's, yeah, we could, we could add a community garden project as a future project. Again, as we indicated in our written response, acquiring open space for a community garden, a new community garden is going to be difficult. I mean, we definitely are park deficient in some areas, and our focus is to try to acquire as much park space for everyone as possible.
Yeah, it would be good, at least to be.
Point taken, yes.
In compliance. And then, speaking of needing park space, we have two policies related to the acquisition of parks. And, yeah, so Policy OSR 1.3 is pursue acquisition and development of parks within park-deficient areas as identified in the Open Space and Recreation Element. And Policy OSR 1.4 is to prioritize the acquisition of land for parks in underserved neighborhoods. And based on the fact that West Side Park Development specifically has been pushed to the year two column, I think a few years in a row now, I don't know if we are prioritizing it. So I wanted to ask staff, what's up with that? Why has West Side Park Development been pushed along despite our policy?
So Commissioner Martinez, acquisition of land for new park space is, as I mentioned, it's very difficult. Doesn't mean that we are not trying. So while we don't have a project per se, if we have an opportunity to acquire land, city has ability to go and make that purchase. We did that for our bridge shelter. That's a good example. We wanted to buy a building for our bridge shelter, and when we found the building, the city came up with the money to go ahead and purchase that building. So it's, not being on the list doesn't exclude the city from acquiring a park if one becomes available. But again, getting to that point is a challenge. And I know our city manager's office is on a look, is keeping an eye out if there are opportunities to acquire, and, you know, will do that. Meanwhile, as you know, we're converting some of the, expanding some existing parks, like Shalimar and even Ketchum Light Bolt, by using some of the parkways and converting them into usable park space. So we're doing some other ways to increase park space, but if we find an opportunity to acquire one, we will. And as you know, we're also working with our school district to use their fields as temporary park space for our youth.
Yeah, so.
Well, just one thing, Commissioner Martinez. Also, our colleagues at Parks and Community Services, they're also working on the Open Space Master Plan. So in doing so, by having that plan, it'll help us plan and prioritize open spaces and park spaces, and that will be a valuable tool in assessing new areas for these community gardens, finding what areas for that.
Great. So just to confirm and wrap it up, even if it isn't in our one-year CIP list, the city has the opportunity to get grants, go out and fund projects in years two, three, whatever, and the five-year, even if they're not in our one-year. Let's collect. All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. I'll go ahead and open the meeting for public comments. If you'd like to speak to this item, you're welcome to come to either podium. You have three minutes, per usual. One-minute mark, you'll hear the ding, and it'll shut off at three minutes. Chair Tabuto, welcome. Oh, you're not chair anymore?
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. And I'm talking about the process. I'm not going to talk about what projects should be included or not included. And I really appreciate Commissioners Martinez's comments because that's exactly what I'm talking about. You were given today by staff, again, I'm talking about the process, not staff, you were given a list of projects. That's all you saw was a list of projects. Do you know that there's a capital improvement program that has projects listed for the upcoming year 2425 that should be compared against, in my opinion? That way, you can say, well, okay, a year ago, we had planned this, anticipated this to be funded in 2425. Now 2425 is upon us. Now we're proposing something different, which is fine. Priorities change, things happen, whatever. But at least show the comparison between what we thought was going to happen a year from now, and now that we're here, what we're proposing. And that way, you can make more informed decisions on comparing what's proposed versus what was thought to be proposed a year ago. Unless you do homework like Commissioner did, you would not know that West Side Park Development's been deferred for four years in a row. There's about $300,000, if I'm not mistaken, about $300,000 plus some change, funding for park development, park acquisition. Well, I'm not, you know, if that CIP had been followed for the last four years, there'd be about $9 million accumulated for park acquisition. Now, that's not to say that would have been followed every year, but at least you would have known and made informed decisions that you were deferring that budgeting, or maybe you would have budgeted something less per year. So that's all I'm asking is, let's compare what we thought we were going to do with what is being proposed today. Hopefully, I'm not speaking out of turn, but I made the same comments at the Park Commission meeting last Thursday. And they appreciated seeing both lists because they realized that some of the projects that were planned a year ago for this upcoming year were being deferred. Again, I'm not making value judgments where they should be deferred or not deferred. I'm just saying, let's go through that process of comparing the two lists, and then people can make more informed decisions. As it was, they thought some of those projects that were deferred should be, should not have been deferred. So we'll see what happens there. That will end up, probably won't end up with the city council. But again, the process, show both lists, do some comparisons, and make more informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tabuto. Ms. McDonald, welcome back up.
Thank you, Mr. Yang, for the presentation. That's great. I am going to talk about a couple of projects because, yeah, like Ralph said, we need to keep comparing. How are we doing? Our parks need constant maintenance and upgrade. That's a given. But I want to point out that Polerino Park has been missing public restrooms for many years now. As a consequence, that park doesn't get used as much. I don't take my grandson there. My four-year-old grandson cannot wait three blocks to get home to go. And I'm not going to teach him that the bushes are a restroom. Those restrooms were removed, and the adjacent schoolyard was fenced off as a result of xenophobia part of a few residents and the school principal at the time. It's time to return the use of the schoolyard, and it's because the park is so small, and to reconstruct the restroom facilities. The active transportation projects, I am always very excited about, but there is a signal proposed at Belfast and Fairview Road. It is not needed. This is a purely car-oriented project. It provides no benefits to cyclists or pedestrians. There are two signals, one block on either side of Belfast, Polerino and McCormick, that allow a left turn from Belfast onto Fairview Road even during rush hour because they are timed to turn red simultaneously. One never has to wait longer than 90 seconds to make a left turn there. On the other hand, the 600K. On the other hand, the 600K from that signal will be better spent on active transportation improvements to Fairview Road from the freeway down to Baker Street, which has many sidewalk impediments that violate ADA guidelines, along with the bike lanes that disappear and appear, and missing crosswalks. The median has been long neglected, with misshaped trees, bare dirt, buckling concrete. This is an entrance to our city that leads to the sports fields, fairgrounds, and OCC. And it doesn't give a picture to our visitors that we care about the appearance of our city. Lastly, can you please look into filling in gaps in bike lanes around the city, especially Bristol in front of the lab? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? All right, seeing none. Anna, do we have anyone online or on telephone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the new business item. And I will just share a quick thought. I'll, I'll go back to the time I spent with Mr. Yang before our meeting, going through a lot of these projects. Thank you, Mr. Yang, for taking the time today, I appreciate it. The discussion was very helpful. I will say that as far as these projects go, as a matter of form, it comes to us to inform us as to what the city is doing, but we do not set the policy direction on these. That comes from city council. So far be it from us to get into the weeds about any one of these items, it's good to know, it's good to follow up, it's good to have conversations with staff, but in large part, we do not set this direction. But I'm glad to see that all these projects are moving through, and always happy to get an update from you, Mr. Yang, and you, Director Seth Raman. So thank you. With that, may I have a motion to file and receive? Motion made by Vice Chair Toller, go ahead and second. Do you wish to speak to the item, Vice Chair?
Sure, yeah, I think there were a lot of good.
Actually, Chair, I'm sorry if I interrupt you. The motion actually is approve a resolution.
Oh, really?
I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
Okay.
Should I read it, or is that, Mr. Drapkin? I can, you want me to, should I read it? Yep, yeah, yeah. I move that Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the city's capital improvement program is a fiscal planning and budget activity, which allows the city to plan for future specific capital improvement projects, and does not commit the city to implement any specific project or project design, and therefore is not a project sequel. And that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to approve, let's see, approve a resolution finding that the one-year fiscal year and five-year capital improvement program is consistent with the Costa Mesa 2015 to 2035 general plan.
Seconded.
All right, so, as I was saying, I think everybody said everything that needed to be said. Ms. McDonald, Mr. Taboda.
Commissioner Martinez, I agree with everything. Exploring what's possible under obligations with master plan of arterial highways, investing in active transportation, cleaning up our parks, bike lanes, all that's good, but as the Chair said, we're not really creating policy or directing staff or anything. We have kind of a weird role here, where there's really not a whole lot to do, but, but I think Mr. Taboda brought up a really good point, because as I'm, you know, we get this every year, and it's, it's a spreadsheet, and it's, it's, I mean, it takes a minute, but I get it, sorta. I could kind of understand what's going on, but I have no idea how this compares to last year or the year before, or how things have moved. I look at things like Row 172, see, oh my god, 4.3 million on the signal modernization, and I can't tell where that money came from. You know, I have to go back to the other one, and say, okay, and compare, oh, that's a grant, that's grant money. And it's, it's just constant. You know what it would be, because the whole point is the, the whole point is that you guys are doing a great job, and we're just looking for any red flags, something we missed, some glaring problem, like pie charts, you know? We need some color graphics or something, so that we could see, oh, like the tree planting, Tree City USA, I think that's an important thing for a lot of people, 150,000 a year. It's kind of a drop in the bucket. If that was in a pie chart, you probably wouldn't even see it, right? And so that would, that would be helpful. I did the, I just calculated everything real quick. It looks like half of the budget goes to facilities, and I, my question was, is that, do we do that every year? Does half of our CIP normally go to facilities, or is that a big jump? I don't know, I don't have time to figure that out. But, but the revenue comes from all these different sources, so, really, I'm kind of agreeing, I really appreciate what Mr. Taboda was saying, in that this would be just way too much work to, to sort through and really do our job well. So if we could figure out how to communicate this, for the sake of transparency for us and the public, just so we could be a strong-town city and be fiscally responsible, that'd be, that'd be, that'd be a really appreciated improvement. But other than that, the city's doing a great job.
Thanks, Vice Chair, all second. What Vice Chair Toller mentioned, and what the public mentioned, I will say that I had the privilege of working with Ralph Taboda when we were on Five PAC together, albeit very briefly, before I came to planning. So I know that, I know Ralph's proclivity for getting into the details, and very much appreciate it. And then also, Ms. McDonald, your comments as well, much appreciated. I will say, again, that, you know, we don't set policy, that's above our pay grade. A lot of the decisions about what's financed and how, and priority shifting takes place outside of this board, so we need not concern ourselves with that as far as the scope of work goes here. But very happy to have had you present on the item, and again, always look forward to hearing more. Does anyone else wish to speak? Commissioner Zick.
Yeah, so I would echo your comments. I would also, well, echo everybody's comments, but for different reasons. I worked for many years with Ralph in the real world. He is as a professional finance manager as, as they come. His process observation is right on point. However, I think there's a misunderstanding, or might be a misunderstanding, certainly among the public, over what our role is relative to the list of projects. We're not here supervising what Mr. Seth Raman and his staff do. We're not supervising their performance, we're not supervising their ability to plan, we're not supervising their ability to manage money. Like Commissioner Martinez, the first couple of years that I was doing this, I was grilling Mr. Seth Raman because of my familiarity with managing budgets, managing facilities, and looking at numbers that made no sense to me. And I said, well, how'd you come up with this number? And why is this project in this year and not this year? And if you look at the totals, you know, you mentioned facilities, Vice Chair, you know, we had $25 million this year, next year it's seven, next year it's two, next year it's 900,000. It's like, really? They're not real numbers. The misunderstanding is what is our role relative to this? And it isn't to really make sense of these, other than to say, this is in conformance with our general plan. And what's our general plan say? We're going to take care of parks and streets and roads and, and stuff, and that's what this is. Are these the right projects? I don't know. Who determined these? Who determined which of these projects are going to be done this year? You, council, giving you a call during the day, saying, I got a problem in my district, can you do something by getting this project done this year instead of next? And you go, well, let me take a look at it. You shuffle some stuff around, you don't have a squeaky wheel on this project number 42, so you move it to next year to slot in the squeaky wheel project. I know how your job works, that's what you're doing, and there's nothing wrong with that. You're, you know, you're a, you're a director, you're, you're paid to manage budgets, you're doing a hell of a job, heck of a job. Our role is very limited with regard to this. I mean, I'll support the motion, I just think that people need to have a, a, a clear understanding of the expectation of what our role is. So if there's projects that ought to get done that aren't getting done, we're really not the body to complain to. In fact, there really isn't a citizen committee that's set up to look at the CIP and to hold staff accountable for what they're doing. They're doing a great job, but there's not a citizen committee chartered to do that. So if there should be any recommendation, it would be something along those lines. I'll support this motion, though.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Zick, and thanks for the humor. Commissioner Andrade, any thoughts?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Klepek? All right, Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, so the question that we're being asked tonight as the Planning Commission is to see if this CIP is consistent with our general plan. And I think some people can view this as, yes, it's consistent, or no, it is not consistent. But I do not want to work in that binary. I want to see if it can be more consistent with our general plan. That's why I bring up policy, the policy regarding community gardens, right? That's not in there in our five-year CIP, and if we include it in a future column, then we will be more in compliance with our general plan. So, and when I ask these questions about active transportation, about transit, these are items that are in our general plan. And I want to make sure that we can be as in compliance with our general plan as possible. Right now, as we are, are we in compliance? Yeah, sure, we are. Can we be more in compliance, is the question that I want to ask, and the questions that I've been asking. So I think that we're doing a good job. We have a few active transportation projects in here, we have a lot of parks projects in here, that complies with our general plan, and I want to make sure that Costa Mesa can be the best we can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's go ahead and call the question, please.
That motion carries 6-0.
All right, thank you, Anna. We'll now move on to departmental reports, drawing it back to Mr. Yang.
No report from Public Works Department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Director Drapkin from Development Services.
No report.
All right, thank you. City Attorney's Office, Mr. Preziosi.
I second both those comments.
Okay, all right. That brings us to the end of our meeting. Thank you for joining us this evening, have a good night.